It's really six.
Sorry about that. Sounds like we need to start a forum. I'm wasting my time. Apologies.
I was gonna say, was I?
Was I, was I?
Yes.
He's hiding in the closet.
All right. With that said, well, I'll call to order the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. To order, I'd ask at this time to please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Yeah, at this time, I will recognize the Assistant Township Manager to give the meeting procedures and roll call.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the members of the Board, staff, and public for joining us this evening for the March, excuse me, for the June 3rd regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you were in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairperson calls on you. If you were attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland.
Here.
Ms. Stevens. Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Chair of Court.
All right, thank you. So the Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors did meet in an executive session on Friday, May 30th regarding two matters of personnel. Yeah, and that's all I have for announcements and proclamations, so we will move on to public comments. So at this time, any members of the public that want to speak on items not on the agenda will be invited to come forward to the podium. We just ask that you state your name and municipality of residence. So we'll start in the room, so please feel free to come forward.
Hi.
To the microphone at the front there.
Hi, my name, okay. My name is Nandul Basai. I live in Stonebridge, I'm the treasurer of the Stonebridge Property Owners Association. And we'd just like a couple of minutes to put this in the record, some things we have with issues about the noise coming up, coming out of the ARL Start Lab here on 3127 Research. On behalf of the Stonebridge Residential Committee, Community, I am here tonight to express our concerns regarding the potential noise impacts of Penn State's steady thermal aero research turbine start lab at 3127 Research Drive. This has been going on for several years. We acknowledge and appreciate Penn State's efforts to address community concerns, including their commitment to noise management measures as outlined during the development approval process. So we have been in discussions with Penn State throughout. Their proactive consideration of the noise concerns is appreciated and valued, but clearly they have not done enough. Additionally, we recognize that Penn State, Penn State has taken in the past to address noise concerns at the facility, which has resulted in some noticeable improvements. However, we are the closest residents to this jet engine testing facilities right across the hedges over there and represent over 200 family homes and 200 apartments, 200 more, more than 200 apartments now. A significant portion of our families are home during the day and certainly enjoy their peace in the afternoon and evenings, which are the times that these turbines will be running, have been running. Stonebridge remains concerned about the potential noise impacts of the proposed expansion and the new start plus turbine. We want to reiterate our vigilance in monitoring the project to ensure that the facility does not adversely affect our residents' quality of life. We respect, we respectfully request that Ferguson Township continues to prioritize rigorous oversight of noise mitigation measures, noise mitigation measures as the project moves towards final approval and construction. Stonebridge is committed to working collaboratively with the township and Penn State to ensure our concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And I was gonna say, feel free to reach out to our staff at any time, they're available for any questions or consultation. Yeah, I do have a copy and I can definitely pass this on to staff for you as well, so.
We are on the website, our Planning and Development Director Kimberly Smith, I believe, is providing your contact information as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Should get your contact information there. Do we have any other public comments looking online or in the room? Doesn't look like we got any there. All right, the next, if there is no further public comment, our next item would be the approval of the minutes pending no corrections or changes. I would entertain a motion for that.
This is Lisa, I'll move to approve the minutes.
This is Matt, I'll second.
All right. So all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. All right. Item 5-1, the presentation on the annual municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 program review, and we will recommend the Township Engineer.
Give me a sec. I hit that, hey, there it is, it worked. Technology does work. Cool. Okay, we're back, right? We do this every year because we want to and because we have to. So included in your agenda packet, there was a document that looked something like this. This is our annual MS4 Stormwater Management Program. This is a Word document that I published with changes, using track changes. So basically, we take what we had from the prior year, every year we look at it, we review it, we refresh it, and then we discuss it at a public meeting. So this presentation, the PowerPoint presentation that I walked through, is basically going to mirror the information that's in the program. So if you have any questions about what's in the written document that I don't cover in the presentation, please feel free to ask. That's part of the purpose of this meeting. So Ferguson Township received their first MS4 permit in 2003, and that's the, there you can see the acronyms for NPD, MS4. We love our acronyms. Our permit gets renewed every five years, and sometimes DEP has to extend it if they're not quite ready to issue a new permit, which is what we think will be happening soon. Our current permit expires on June 30th of this year. We did file for renewal of the permit, which we were required to do six months prior, so we did that on December 20th of 2024. They did issue the draft permit, the draft general permit for comments, and we did review and make comments on that, but we haven't seen any additional information on what the new permit might look like. So we're kind of expecting an extension of the existing permit at this time. The permit boundary continues to change based upon census data, so this just kind of shows some history from 2000 and 2010. You know, the 2020 census data is out, but our permit boundary doesn't change until we get a new permit. So we're still working under the boundary that was established with the 2010 census. We expect it to grow a little bit with 2020. You can see the different municipalities within the center of the region, center of county actually, that have MS4 permits. And we do work with these other partners, MS4 partners, what we call ourselves, on some of the requirements that we have with our permit with respect to public education, public involvement, outreach, good housekeeping. So we'll touch base on those as we go forward in the presentation. So the permit we get from DEP does require a written program, that's what this is. So we created this some time ago, and we keep, again, reviewing and updating. It has all the requirements in there that we have to do for six minimum control measures. You'll hear me say MCMs, so this is just quicker and easier. And it also has a component for our pollution reduction plan. It was originally called the Chesapeake Bay Pollution Reduction Plan, it's just now the Chesapeake, it's just now the Pollution Reduction Plan because it's both for the bay and for impaired waters. So we'll review all six of our MCMs and the PRP plan implementation that we're working on. These, again, are the six MCMs, and we'll walk through each one of these. And again, they're all discussed in the, in the written program. The first one being Public Education and Outreach. So this program will really be pretty stable and effective for a lot of users. We're not really making any changes with our written Public Education Outreach Plan. And this is an area where we do cooperate with our MS4 partners in implementing this. Some of the strategies we use, the permit does require we have at least one newsletter article every year, and then also information on our website, our Stormwater Page that takes people to the DEP and EPA websites. So we have all that requirements. Then we have at least two more of the other items that you see on this list, and we actually do do more of that, more than what's required in this regard. The next MCM is Public Involvement and Participation. Again, a written plan, providing opportunities for the public to participate and be involved in our program. This is, this meeting that we have tonight is one of the requirements there is for public involvement and participation, the opportunity to participate in the review of the program. Some of the public strategy that we have with respect to notifying people, it's mostly legal notices, CET. From time to time, we have done press releases, those are more generally project specific. We do have a site on our website, and we'll also do social media blasts as well and newsletters. Some of the opportunities for participation, we do partner with other groups, so the, we have a contract with Clearwater, and we do watershed cleanup day as well as the Rain Bear workshop. And then we also do partnering with the Water Resources Monitoring Project. And these are all things that we support and get credit for for public involvement. And then you see some other things there we do as well. It's not very exciting, again, just highlight that. We really want to get that program going, but we just have been shorthanded in able to do that. We have a lot of material purchased already, we just don't have the resources to implement. So looking forward to getting that going though. The third MCM is a list of discharge detection elimination, IDE. And really, the goal of this area is to keep the water that's in our storm sewer system clean. Really, nothing should go into the storm sewer system, be it a gutter or a swale or a pipe, other than a rain mark or, or snow melt off. So this is an area that everybody can participate in. Anybody in the public, even if you see something running in the gutter that doesn't look like something you want to put in a glass to drink, not that we're advocating that anyway, but if it looks cloudy or turbid, or there's stuff in there that just doesn't look right, let us know, and the best thing to do is report that to the township to my attention or Stormwater Engineer when that position is refilled. Some of the things that we're required to do with respect to our IDE is, one is to maintain a storm sewer system map, which we have as a GIS layer, and that's, that's forward-facing, that's available on our Stormwater Pages, a link there. You can click on that link and you can see all the inlets, all the pipes, and I'll show you some screenshots of that here in a little bit. BMPs, all those types of things. Our ordinance does prohibit illegal discharges, so we have to investigate on complaints, follow up, and do also report it with DEP. This is a real kind of snipper or MS4 system map. This is actually a little bit dated, I have updated in the presentation, sorry for that. But again, it's available on our Stormwater Page. It looks much better than this with the online version we have now. But what this map will show, folks, is pipes, inlets, BMPs, outfalls. It will show public systems, it will show private systems, it will show other MS4 permitee systems. So for example, Pendot and Penn State, they have their own MS4 permits, even though they're in Ferguson Township. So theirs are highlighted differently than ours, and they're responsible for investigating and reporting directly to DEP, so we don't have to oversee those systems. The fourth MCM is our construction stormwater runoff control. And this is one where we have a memorandum of understanding, a MOU with the Center County Conservation District. And through the MOU, they provide all of these requirements of this MCM through their contract with DEP. So all the erosion and sediment control during construction is taken care of by the Conservation District. We do have the MOU, which is required by our permit to document that, even though it's required by law anyway. And that MOU is in the process of being updated, it's on the consent agenda later this evening to update the MOU to be more consistent with our current program, which I think was completed in 2015, so it's 10 years old. So it's just kind of a refresh on that. It's been reviewed by the six MS4 partners as well as the Conservation District, so it's at this stage now for concurrent signing. The fifth MCM is now, once the developments are done, we're into post-construction, and we actually have Stormwater Control Measures, and we're moving from BMPs to SCMs, we didn't catch that last year, so we're no longer best management practices, and they're now physically constructed ones are called Stormwater Control Measures, so they're SCMs. But this is where we now have to track any of those Stormwater Control Measures that are approved as part of a plan. They get added to our GIS inventory. We keep that updated as projects are completed and approved, and then the township has to do inspections on those BMPs, any that were completed since the permit was issued in 2003. They have to be inspected every permit cycle, and then we need to follow up with responsible parties if there's any issues, lack of maintenance that need to be taken care of. These all have recorded agreements and enforcement provisions within our ordinance. So as I mentioned, we do have these on our GIS layer, I mentioned the dates already. There's some statistics right now, there's 246 regulated BMPs, so these are just the BMPs since 2003. Ironically, the township owns 71 of those. So we're not quite a third, but we have a lot of the BMPs that are actually regulated in Township right-of-ways for construction projects here at our own facility, which we did a lot when we did the building addition, we created a lot of new BMPs here, as well as in the Township parks. Not all, not all parks have them, but again, park development since 2003 would have BMPs in them, it's like Tudor Park, Cecil Urban Park, Sherbrooke Park, there's a number of them. And again, I think I mentioned enforcement per the ordinance, and of course, tracking for all this information for our annual reporting with DEP. The last MCM is Pollution Prevention and Good Housekeeping. And this is just kind of documenting what we do here as a municipality for the operations that we have to try to make sure we do what we need to do to maintain good, clean storm water. So we have an operations and maintenance program, and it's mostly geared towards public works. That's really the one that is out about the most. And then we have training that we do with employees and a little more specific with our Public Works Department, specific training for center region parks and rec field personnel, and then also for emergency responders. Some of this stuff is specific to our public works, you know, we talk about fleet maintenance and fueling, salt storage, our storm sewer system maintenance permit that we have, E D waste collection, and then that last one is our preparedness, prevention, and contingency for spill prevention, control, and counter measures. That's what that stands for. And that's what we do to be prepared in the event of a spill, be it at the fueling island with absorb materials, emergency shut-off valves, and all of the trucks that go out on the road, they have spill kits, so if we have a line break, we can get that contained and cleaned up quickly. Our, our spill prevention plan, just so it's out there, we don't respond to spills on public highways. If a tanker were overturned and there's a spill, that's not, that's still going through emergency emergency. But we are prepared to take care of any issues that might arise from urban operations. And then the last component of our program is our Pollution Reduction Plan. And again, for those who aren't familiar with it, the Pollution Reduction Plan is something that's really to help improve the water quality for not just the Chesapeake Bay, but also the local impaired waterways. So we did a, a, a pollution prevention plan as a joint effort with all the center region MS4 partners. They described our planning area, determined our pollutant loading, and they came up with pollution control measures to reduce those pollutants. This plan was approved by DEP with our last permit. We did go through some amendments on that in 2024, which had been approved. And again, the goal was meeting our 10% requirement under the current permit cycle. Part of that requires us to implement these projects, and we'll just touch on both of those next, with respect to getting easements permitting construction within our permit cycles. So our, our goal is to be completed here this summer so we can report on it by September of 2025 to DEP to say, hey, we checked the box, we met our requirements. From what I'm hearing, there's a lot of municipalities that aren't even as far along as we are. So I think we're doing pretty good, given the current environment that's up there. So this is a table that came from the revision, the amendment to the PRP plan, and this just lists out the different watersheds and the projects that are primary or secondary for implementation. And again, for us, we are, we're looking at the Duck Pond Inflow Channel as one project, and then the Beaver Branch Stream Restoration Project for our second one for flows towards Spruce Street. So for that, and first, the Beaver Branch location, again, is in the Pine Ridge neighborhood, just downstream where the waterway crosses under Wyoming Drive, it's about 325 feet long. Design permit easements, bidding is all complete, we've awarded that contract to Aquatic Resource Restoration Company. It's the same contractor that did the Park West Drainage Project. And again, construction, this project should be completed by September of 2025. The Duck Pond Inflow Channel is the other project, so this is the channel that runs into the Duck Pond. It actually does not include the Duck Pond, but this is a stream bank stabilization project that Penn State completed, so it's done, and we're just in the final stages developing that cost sharing agreement with Penn State so we can check the box that we've completed the requirements for the spring water shed. So just a slide about what's next, you know, because we are kind of at the end of our permit cycle. Again, as I mentioned before, our permit expires June 30th of this year. We did file for the extension, and we did make comments on the draft permit, but as again, as I mentioned before, I don't expect that we'll see a permit for us by July 1st of 2025. So we're anticipating an extension of the existing permit for some unknown period so that DEP can do what they need to do to finalize the new permit requirements, get them published again. The general permit has also been published, the individual permit, which we will get, because we discharged two of the impaired waterway, that would be issued until after the general permit is finalized. So we're waiting for that guidance, they're making another round of comments because there were a lot of comments on the draft permit, pretty extensive. And a lot of that centers around, not so much the six MCMs that we always had, but the Pollution Reduction Plan part of it. They're really changing their whole methodology of calculating what pollution reductions will be for the watershed. That whole methodology is changing, and the focus for the types of projects is likely going to change too. So that's just kind of where we are. So we think over the next year, we've probably had a lot of activity with, with respect to pollution reduction plans. So in 2026, we'll probably be waiting to find out what's going on before we really get going with planning for what our next set of projects may be for that. And that's all I have for the program review. If you have any questions for me, I'm here to do my best to try and answer them.
Any questions?
And next year, I'd like any one of you to stand up and give the same presentation.
You did before. Lisa, this is like your sixth or seventh.
Yeah, but this is very, this is always very interesting, but this is really, you know, interesting with the, the changes and the, the plan requirements, I guess that we don't know.
We don't know for sure what they're going to be, but from the draft permit, it looks like they're going away from stream bank stabilization type projects and wanting more to projects that would encourage volume infiltration. So looking at existing facilities that don't have infiltration as part of it, and looking at retrofits and conversions to some existing facilities. So it would still involve, you know, doing the plan, coming up with what, where they would be, and how much we'd have to do to meet the, the permit requirements that may still require easements and agreements on private property to find those facilities that we can do those types of projects. Of course, we'll look for our own first, right? Because we already have those lands, but there may be, down the road, we may have to look at working with HOAs or private property owners to say, hey, this is a prime candidate, maybe this is the basin that we can convert, turn into. But some of that is just dependent upon, is the facility even conducive to that? There's some places where we have soils that just won't infiltrate, so we have to be strategic about where we attempt to do that.
Well, that's, that was going to be my question, is would this be related to, you know, improving some of these stormwater basins that we know have been neglected over time, we're kind of trying to get to them, so it could, it could be that, it could be.
Sure, it depends upon what watershed they're in and what potential there is within each specific facility, yeah.
So I guess it'll be interesting when we talk about the CIP to know what, you know, what we're looking at.
Yeah, we've made some projections, not knowing for sure what it's going to be. I don't think we put anything in projection for next year, but the year following to do the planning, and then years after that to do construction. We had no idea what, there's a number out there, a place for us, we know, we're going to have to do something. So we've just kind of thrown a, a best guess out there for those for now. As we work through in the years ahead with the CIP, that'll obviously get. As we work through in the years ahead with the CIP, that'll obviously get refined.
Mr. Patterson. You're on mute, Mr. Patterson. Or you don't hear us? While Mr. Patterson's working on that, did you have anything, Mr. Heller?
No, first of all, thank you for the presentation. This is only my third maybe, second. No, I always appreciate this because it helps shed a light on, you know, what's, what's going on. A couple of different questions, if I may. The, the extension, and I'm just looking at the presentation here, the six months, et cetera. Some projects wrapping up maybe in September, which would be past that June thirtieth, that extension would cover us for those projects that might go into September, et cetera.
No, there's still the requirement to have it completed by the end of our permit year. But we know we're not going to meet June thirty, but we know we're going to be done by when we submit our annual report in September. And so DEP has said they will look favorably on that because it's a better time to complete the project.
Okay, so they've already given us.
They won't meet the permit. They won't give us an extension, but they look favorably upon the delay.
That is as close to confirmation as we're going to get.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So let me just take that and extrapolate one other point then. Related to the duck pond negotiation, et cetera, where does that fall in timeline?
Same timeline. Deadline is June thirtieth of this year. Yep.
So that has to be still signed by June thirtieth?
That's the goal. That's the goal. Yes.
Have we gone to DEP to say, hey, what if that happens in July or?
It would be the same answer as the other project. There's not as many good justifications for why it's not getting done. Like the construction project in Pine Ridge is because it's more favorable to plant the stream back stabilization in late August, early September as opposed to late May, early June. Just for survivability of the, of the plant materials.
Well, I was actually going for the actual signing of a contract with Penn State, which unrelated to this, I would say the specifics of the, the boots on the ground type of situation. I'm just trying to understand whether or not that still has to be signed by June thirtieth or if there's, if we ask DEP for an extension if it isn't.
We will not be granted an extension. So we're, we know that. On this particular item, they have said we will look favorably on having it in by September, recognizing that there is durability, environmental impact and characteristics to be considered. There's been no discussions to talk about what it would look like for an extension on the agreement, the nature of the agreement that we currently are. I can share with you that will be on our next agenda to meet the deadline. Are at this point in time, recognizing that we very well may fall into that September range for this other project to meet our MS four credit requirements. So we intend to have this deadline completed. So just spoke with, via email, there was correspondence with Penn State today as well as the township solicitor. So that is moving forward.
Okay. Do we anticipate reaching out to DEP and asking in advance of next supervisor's meeting as to what an extension might look like or at least start a conversation with them?
They've already told us they do not grant extensions. They don't, period. You don't get extensions for the requirements of the permit.
But they look favorably on other things.
So, so, so the delay in not meeting the permit extension for that project in Pine Ridge, they said, look, we understand you're not going to meet it. And there's good reasons not to meet it. So they would look favorably upon that. And again, our goal is still going to be though, to have it complete before we file our annual report. So at our annual report that we file at the end of September, we can say, yes, we've completed everything. We'll submit the documentation as evidence that it's been completed as well.
Okay, no, that helps clarify kind of the differences there and I appreciate it. And actually, Lisa, I was jotting down CIP also because I was thinking how that would, in fact, we mentioned infiltration. Do we also earn credits for current state? And what I, what comes to mind for me when I think about infiltration is something like slab cabin. It gets down across East Pine Grove Road and then it disappears. It goes underground. Like, is that infiltration and do we get credits for that automatically?
That, that, I don't, I can't say it's infiltration, but it is, it is water getting back to the ground. It isn't always infiltrating. Normally it's going through some other direct conduit to get there. And the answer is no, we don't, we don't get credits for that. In some aspects, when we did the Big Hollow as part of our current PRP, we calibrated the flows out of that watershed because Penn State had rainfall and rain gauge, I'm sorry, rain gauge and stream flow data. They could support what the actual flow is coming out of that watershed. So we calibrated that model. So we reduced the amount of flow that's coming out and subsequently we reduced the sediment loading and the requirements to mitigate it. So through a calibration process, we kind of documented the infiltration characteristics of the, of the Big Hollow watershed as part of that permit. But to do that, it's, it's a big effort and you need to have that information to be able to back up your calculations to document your flows. We don't have that kind of information for, for slab cabin run. And slab cabin runs a bit of a different watershed than Big Hollow. Because you do have a perennial flow there and Big Hollow is just more of a ephemeral watershed where we only get flows as a direct result of rainfall and then they're gone. So I don't know how DEP would even look at that if we tried to make an attempt to, to, to make a calibration of the slab cabin watershed to take credits for that. I think that would be questioned pretty highly.
Well, great. Thank you. Again, when I hear infiltration, I go, well, it disappears. That sounds like it infiltrated. So, okay. Those are my only questions. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We'll go back to Mr. Patterson.
Can you hear me now?
I can, we can hear you.
All right. My first question was just an understanding. This is now my second presentation here.
Mr. Patterson, your audio cut out.
That's the room in silent.
Did we have any other board members that wanted to, well, we've kind of gone through everyone. I definitely put in a plug for that township page because there is a lot of material, a lot of acronyms. I know anyone from the general public looking through this is like, what in the world? But, you know, the webpage is a great resource to kind of sit down and go through everything, you know, in your spare time to better understand.
Yeah, and Karina did a great job with the interactive map. So you can get out there, you can click on and off different features, zoom in, just look at your parcels. There's all kinds of information out there that's, that's very interactive that you can do from your home PC.
Coming in through my phone, Mr. Patterson saying he was asking about impacts. How well is this stuff working?
I'm presuming he's talking with respect to the overall stormwater management program and what we do, probably as well as the pollution reduction plans and the projects that we're implementing. So I think with respect to the six MCMs that we have, I think that works pretty well. We do a good job of educating the public about things, getting them involved in things, especially with the rain barrel workshop and watershed cleanup day. I think we do a really good job of monitoring the BMPs during construction and making sure they're functioning properly. But one of the, some of the biggest things we ran into issues there are just people not properly maintaining their basins or sinkholes that may open up, trying to make sure those get closed up so we don't get direct water going into the groundwater. And I think with respect to the implementation of our, our in-house, the housekeeping program, again, it's, it's pretty good. I'd say we probably have one of the better ones out there. Some of them don't even have a written pollution spill prevention plan. So I think those are all good things that we've had. And it's just to be able to say that our trucks are equipped with this stuff in case there's a hydraulic leak, we can address it immediately is good stuff. With respect to the effectiveness of the pollution reduction plan projects that we implement, that is really hard to quantify. We just know we have to do these things because it's required by the permit. And if we, if we do these projects based upon the expert panel reports that have been completed that document what the sediment load reduction is, that's, that's the best that we have that we can do. I hope that answered his question.
I will ask one of the two Omari, we now have two Omari Pattersons online. Hopefully, I imagine one of them can speak. Still not hearing anything, Omari. I did ask if he could hear. Omari, could you hear us? Or any, anyone that's online, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now? Testing.
I could hear you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, no, that answered my question perfectly. Really appreciate that. So I, I think it might be kind of time for us to, as a board, kind of give some feedback to, I guess, whoever, you know, at the state level. Because I guess I'm concerned primarily with, we're doing all this work and other municipalities are doing maybe little to none. And, you know, if, if this program stays or like all were to end tomorrow, we will have spent a bunch of money and others will have spent nothing. And, and we're kind of, we've done our, I think we've done our environmental duty. That's, that's goodness. But I'm a little concerned here about like, what happens if we don't? Or, or yeah, I don't know how to put this into words. I'm a little concerned just broadly about doing these things because they're required, because they're on some, you know, piece of paper and they actually don't do anything. There we go. That's my concern. And I'd like to hear feedback to our, to, you know, the administrators of this program as a board to say, hey, this isn't helpful, you know, can you remove it? And I think that's, that's a, that would be a good leadership from a municipal perspective for the board to take stance if these things are or are not working. Over.
I'll defer to the manager for that.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I would just acknowledge that it's not just Pennsylvania legislation that requires. So in addition to PA DEP requirements and I think it's what Title sixty-five for environmental protection legislation. While there are those two state legislative pieces, there's also federal legislation that does inform and require our MS four permit requirements such as the Clean Air Water Act. So there are various pieces of legislation at federal and state level that require and inform on this. And so I would just say at this point in time, I completely understand and don't disagree with Supervisor Patterson's concerns in that like there are probably municipalities that are able to kind of not meet these requirements without any penalties. But that's not necessarily our area of oversight or jurisdiction. And I would be cautious and careful, especially taking a leadership role that we, that we just focus on making sure that we're meeting our requirements. I want to assure the board that our township engineer, who's got so much incredible experience, knowledge and, and, you know, time working with this and established relationships at the state and with other various MS four permit carriers, that his feedback does matter. And so therefore, you know, Ferguson Township's feedback to the pending drafted changes to MS four, I believe and have every reason to believe that our regional comments, you know, do carry weight. But outside of realizing that that is our leadership role at this time, I would say let's, let's continue to have some conversations, better understand the legislation that informs the MS four requirement standards and maybe circle back. I don't want to dismiss Supervisor Patterson's comment, but I would just kind of acknowledge that there's more than state legislation that informs. And I think perhaps maybe where Ron and I can carry conversations offline is, is the impact. Like what impact are we having on the Chesapeake Bay, which is ultimately, that is the pollution reduction goal, right? It's how are we maintaining the environmental benefits that I believe all three pieces of legislation are designed to help minimize that pollution impact. So those are my comments.
And if I understand correctly, by us doing nothing, we would have to pay like a fine or some type of penalty, which is taxpayer dollars then going out of Ferguson Township or trying to keep them here locally in our own investments to the Chesapeake Bay.
I don't want to suggest necessarily what the punitive consequences would be, especially when we do have recognition that the, you know, that the enforcement may or may not vary across municipalities. But, but I will say that generally in observation, when anything goes to some type of level of enforcement or, you know, punitive impact for, you know, failure to comply with any legislations, local, state or federal. Generally, there is a factor that is, that is observed, which is the ability to pay, the ability to perform, the ability, you know, Ferguson Township has the ability to comply as we've demonstrated over several years, an ability to comply with MS four requirements. And so I certainly in no way would suggest that now is the time that we wouldn't want to comply. Without speaking to what enforcement or impact would look like for other municipalities, no idea, certainly not in a position to speculate. But just focusing on, on where we are and what we need to do moving forward, I think is a good, a good role for, for us right now.
Yeah, this has gone in a direction that was not, I did not intend to go in this direction about let's not do this. Like I don't want anybody to get that impression. That's not where I'm going. So let me take it back to where I'm going. Where I'm going is I'm having a hard time with, when I ask the question like, hey, how are we doing? And some of the answers that was, well, you can't really quantify that. And so if we can't really quantify it, then why are we doing it? Or if like, if it is a good thing to do and, and yes, it does keep, you know, microns of sawdust out of the, okay, fine, that's. But I want to just understand the things that are not helpful for us and they're in the permit. And the same thing that we did last meeting where we said, hey, we're going to write a letter, we're going to lobby to get some of this stuff, you know, changed or at least kind of ask our partners and other municipalities to lobby for these things to be changed. I'd like to do the same thing with this as well. Because I just, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time, like we're, we're shelling out dollars. And maybe some of the things we're shelling out dollars for are not helpful. And so I'd like to see the list of things that are not helpful and then to be able to say, hey, let's draft a letter on those things. Over.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification and Ron and I could certainly have conversations to identify what of the six components may or may not be helpful and circle back and provide an update in a department report and or circle back with a discussion. If that makes sense. Thank you.
Jeremy, do we need a formal motion to direct for this to be done over the next two meetings?
There is no recommended action tonight. I think it would be appropriate for us to just leave it at this. And should further action be warranted, we can do that at another meeting. Any other comments?
Hi. It's a small point of order. I think we've deliberated a little bit here. And I think what I'm hearing is there's going to be some action, but it's not board-directed action.
So if there's, appreciate all of the feedback and Ron and I will have some conversations and we'll circle back as needed.
Anything else?
I, I think I'd like to, I'd like to have kind of a formal circle back. What do you think about that, Board?
So right now, we have not advertised for deliberation for any action on behalf of the board this evening. So this is only as a presentation for the board to receive a presentation. So we can certainly have conversations later as in terms of what a formal process would look like for further conversation.
Yeah, that, that's where I'm having problems with taking any further actions, just staying compliant with Act sixty-five and any other applicable laws here. So I think we need to leave it at this and then we can explore it in another meeting if warranted.
Sounds good.
You have any closing remarks, Mr. Seidner?
Sure. No, I'm good.
Just kind of say, I think, I think we're good here. So appreciate it. Thank you. Don't necessarily want to put CNET on the spot, but do you need a technical break? Okay, we'll have the board stand at ease while CNET does some adjustments. We have been offline on cable television tonight, but it looks like CNET. but, uh, it looks like CNET's been working overtime, trying to get this up and running, so.
Are you going to do an official recess? Or do you want to continue?
It's going to continue. Because I don't, at least it didn't seem, it seems like they got vision this evening. We were temporarily offline, but thanks to the hard work of, uh, CNET, they, appears they probably got us back online. So that will move aside, item 5.2 on our agenda, the diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. Uh, for the month of June, we have National Caribbean American Heritage Month, Pride Month, Immigrant Heritage Month. And Juneteenth will be on, uh, June 19th. Uh, also, another event that came to my attention in June is National Dairy Month, so. Big shout out to our dairy, dairy farmers. Item 5.4, Authorities, Boards, and Commissions Reports. We have none of those for this evening, so we'll move to 5.4, the CAG and Regional Committee Reports, starting with the Finance Committee.
All right. So the Finance Committee led, met back way back, May 8th. Wow, okay. Um, and in that time, I just wanted to highlight a couple of different things. We talked about some economic impacts to CAG due to federal action, uh, funding, et cetera. And it looks like, of course, as we discussed before, the AmeriCorps, you know, being impacted is something that was discussed where there was three months left on the term and we're going to get approximately half of our money back. So again, decisions at the federal level impacting things that we do here locally. Uh, went through the proposed time, budget timeline. Again, Executive Committee, thanks to them, moved to accommodate the timeline, uh, around 16th of September, the 18th of September. And then finally, the big one is the, our first discussion around adjusting the fund balance policies. And we took a look at the Office of Administration. So that was the first group that we are looking at. And we recommended removing the contingency of about $35,000, uh, as well as the fund balance policy related to, um, unemployment. Both, now, I'm cer, I should say that the contingency discussion will have to go to general forums, so you'll hear more about that as it goes forward. Um, and also removing the unemployment, um, section of the fund because our fund balance policy that we're talking about would pretty much cover the contingency and the unemployment. So we're going to build that into the fund balance policies so that we don't need separate line items essentially for contingency or separate line item for unemployment. We're building that potential and those risks into the fund balance policy for that one. And you'll probably hear that in, in future discussions as well. Uh, finally, the other part, the insurance reserve, that is going to, uh, remain to cover, um, non-employee healthcare, uh, et cetera. That's that. And then finally, good news, the IRS waived the $7,200 penalty on the date issue that happened back in 2022, when they couldn't get ahold of anybody here at CAG to say, hey, we need this report, et cetera. Where is it? Me paraphrasing, um, and it was just missed. So that $7,200 penalty has been waived. And we are still waiting to hear about the appeal for the 2023, um, that has been processed. But we, we haven't heard anything back from the IRS saying whether or not that fee will be waived. But that fee is only a couple hundred dollars if it is imposed anyway. Not even close to the $7,200 that we've been able to move away from. And the other good news, sorry, apologies, uh, the funds for the better pipe and, um, and rail access study were approved. We just heard that in general.
That's good.
Yeah. Happy to answer the questions.
Any questions?
I was just going to ask, so the elimination of those two separate contingencies, or the contingency and the admin and the, and the other, um, and unemployment. So this is, I guess, I just, how does this discussion play into the overall planning process for a fund balance policy?
That, I would say, that's one of those things where I think everybody will have to watch every episode of these things play out. I think that, that conversation was like 45 minutes around the different municipal, um, finance officers weighing in on what should be done and how it should be done. In this particular way, it's just a saying that if we're addressing and looking at the fund balance policies, we're going to build this into it and not say there's $35,000 sitting in there. It's just going to be lumped into our general thinking about the fund policy. And we're moving from a 45-day to a 30-day policy. So having less cash on hand essentially to reduce that number. That doesn't, I don't know, that, that probably doesn't answer the question.
I mean, it, it makes sense to do all these things, but I think I, I am looking forward to hearing what the policy is, the overall policy. And so these incremental steps, I would have expected them to come after the general forum where the municipalities were presented with our fund balance policy.
That, that's a procedural question. Let me, let me take that back. So, one second. And what I'll say is, the other part of this too is there is not
If I understand correctly.
Sorry, Omari, please.
I think I'm delayed. You go ahead. Sorry.
Um, this, there isn't one fund balance policy for everyone. It's, it's going to be every single unit. We'll look at each of those funds differently. And have a fund balance policy individualized for each one. So this was just the first one, which is the Office of the Administration that we looked at. And then every month, we're going to hit up another one to work our way through all the, the different, uh, directors in, at the CAG.
Okay. And then will those just be approved by Finance?
That's what I'm going to take back. And get that formal thought there, because there was no formal motion that, that was presented. It was, yes, let's do this, let's cut that, move this, got the input, et cetera. So that next step, I can ask those questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're interested to know if that would go further to even, I guess, general forum, or?
Yeah, or to the municipalities that fund these, because then, you know, I'm seeing library, planning, fire, these are not participated in by all municipalities either. So it becomes pretty complex, especially if you're having Finance Committee with members who don't participate in all of these things, deciding on these fund balance policies. I'd rather these be addressed by the municipalities that are actually paying.
Right. And don't, based off some feedback that I've received as your CAG chair, don't hesitate if there's anything that you feel needs to go to other committees, general forum, or back to municipalities, you know, feel free to chime in and, um, staff will weigh that and, yeah.
Yeah. And so, and then again, it is in the notes, right? That this is being brought to general forum, re, related to the contingency of the $35,000. So I anticipate, I don't want to speak and say the whole thing's going to be brought to general forum. I need to get clarity on that, but yes.
Yeah. And I think that would be a point to, to raise, is that, you know, with these, you know, I, I appreciate them being separate policies for the different departments, but let's vote on them as, um, applicable, like, who is actually paying for these things? Let's make our own decisions. So it's, um, you know, so it's fair across the board as, you know, we're deciding because we pay into it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms, Mr. Patterson, did you have anything to add?
I'm okay. Thanks so much.
All right. Any other? If not, I was going to say, how, how's the Climate Action Sustainability Committee?
Climate Action Sustainability, Matt, with the statements. Uh, let's see here. So, uh, we did talk about the power outage and food loss response. Um, you know, of course, some of the storms that happened last month. Really noted that it's recommended that we have better coordination and planning through emergency management, um, et cetera. So there's also the community steward, stewardship network updates. So 15 of the 16 individuals actually completed the training, so that's good. And it is noted, unfortunately, again, there's a few, um, fund concerns that the AmeriCorps member, there won't be an AmeriCorps member after 5/24. So here we are in June, um, et cetera. So that was that. And then with the CRPA budget updates, there was some additional information provided there. Again, back to the AmeriCorps position into the budget that was incorporated in on a permanent basis. Um, but again, the position exists, there's funding, but there's still questions around the funding going forward. Nothing much in that to share. And removing the unfilled and unfunded senior land use developer, use planner position because the demand has decreased, so that's one thing. Actually, that was one thing that, that happened, was going to be, um, stepping away from since they are not a voting member in that space. And bottom line that's happening, there's two other positions moved to unfunded positions until after, for a good conversation. So the senior planner, leaving the organization and Pam's previous position, essentially are unfunded positions sitting on the side there. So again, there's some HR stuff you have, I don't know if you're going to hear about that or whoever on HR, as I look around. Um, but that should actually produce a net reduction in the budget. But we still need the local managers and others to, to weigh in and have say in those spaces.
Yeah, I was going to say, in terms of planning, and that, that was something that was brought into HR. It kind of sounds like there's just a lot of, just coordination right now because the planning needs have, uh, evolved and changed and, uh, yeah, it seems like we just want to hold off on really backfilling anything until we know what's going to be the perfect fit for regional planning going forward. Um, my understanding with the AmeriCorps, we wanted to at least maybe anticipate those for 2026 because right now that is in a multi-state lawsuit. So it's possible, depending on how a judge may rule, that AmeriCorps could be reestablished. Just a wait and see.
It is a wait and see. And fortunately, this meeting was, oh, back on May 12th, and I'm sure things have changed in the environment.
Yeah, as I was preparing for this, I'm like, did any of this change? Because I, I'm, I've also kind of learned since January, the beginning of the later half of January, what could be a sunny day turns into partly cloudy and rain by noon and then ends in a sunny day. If you understand.
Spoken like a true farmer.
Yeah. So. Any comments on climate action sustainability, Mr. Strickland?
Yeah, I was going, and I'll probably hear about this. We have a Lucy meeting on Thursday, so we'll hear about the, um, positions. I think this is very good. I think this is a good step. And this has been several years in the making too, is to really reevaluate the local planning needs. And so I think this is, I think this is good. And then I'll just throw in, I don't have a report today on the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, but we did meet and you'll hear about it. Um, Kevin, Abby does his report, but, you know, they were impacted by the AmeriCorps funding pretty substantially as well. So that's, um, that's something you'll hear about in the future. So, okay, I guess, um, so you heard about the, I guess, I was just surprised to see the CRPA budget updates in the Climate Committee, but that's because Pam Adams is the, is that, am I following this?
Yes, because Pam Adams is in that role.
Is it now in that role?
Yeah. So that's why I think there's going to be a lot of cross-pollination.
Right, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, okay, so with the SPPA then, is she still our lead person?
I believe so. I haven't heard any changes in that.
My, my understanding, she's still focusing on her day job, but taking on the title of the Director of CRPA.
Good. And again, I'll probably get a lot of the same information on Thursday and with, um, context around it. So, um, we'll be able to fill in some more at our next meeting too.
You had anything, Mr. Patterson? If not, I'll move over to HR Committee.
No, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not Matt.
Yeah, I was going to say, though, this has a nice flow to it. So with HR Committee, I, I just have a bunch of stuff and I think, I think it's best to just share this. So the committee was asked to provide staff with metrics that they would like to see. Uh, the committee didn't have much feedback, but the board here is asked to just let me know of anything you want to suggest or see metrics on tonight. Of course, being cognizant of staff time, um, I will note that this is not, um, asking staff to list random tasks like a dodge list. Uh, the goal is just to identify meaningful analytics that are possibly already at the fingertips of CAG staff that they can, uh, share with us. Uh, we don't want to, like, deep, deep dive into, like, anything that's going to create a lot of additional, uh, burden or workload. And that was another concern of just any additional effort to try to get information. Uh, to a few people on the committee, we, we understand sometimes, you know, maybe helpful to, uh, even just kind of like take a snapshot of a one-off, uh, situation to kind of benchmark a certain task or procedure. Like, for example, um, later on in my report, there was, um, an ask where the HR staff was like, we spend hours trying to chase down onboarding paperwork from people. Well, just taking maybe five new hires, how, how much time? You know, just to kind of understand, okay, this is how much time you are doing in the current state by chasing down physical papers. And then maybe if they, if we do approve later on in the budget for their electronic onboarding system that I'm going to bring up about, they could say, hey, it only takes us a five-minute phone call now to get, you know, those papers, you know? So little, little things like that. Just, just small efforts to help assess, uh, effectiveness and improve, uh, future operations. So the budget items that HR is looking for, uh, a time and attendance mo, module that's integrated directly with the payroll system, that will centralize time off accruals and, uh, balances. Uh, that will enable the employees to request time off electronically. And then the managers can approve that in the system, eliminating the need for any calls or texts or emails or paper exchanges. Uh, it replaces the current spreadsheet-based tracking, so it reduces the risk of any miscalculations in accruals or time off balances to improve accuracy. Uh, I, I think it gives an added security benefit. Uh, not, not, not saying, you know, anyone here would do this, but, you know, given, uh, external, uh, news reports of time falsification elsewhere, uh, I think the system will enhance the accountability and control over attendance records. Then the other system they're looking to implement is I Hire for centralized recruiting. It centralizes all the job postings and candidate applications. It better, better allow HR to support each department through, uh, hiring needs. Uh, improves the internal data retention, which is a vital component of employment recruiting and compliance, being able to, uh, retain any records that come in. Uh, creates a more efficient hiring process by consolidating recruitment efforts into a single platform. And then the last thing is that digital onboarding mo, module that I talked about. So instead of physical HR paperwork that has to be, uh, filled out and then somebody is typing it into a system and just reducing that manual entry and transfer into an electronic record to candidate, the new hire just puts, puts it in through a secure, uh, website, uh, and then it goes right, right into the system. And I think it also ha, will help enhance data security. One thing I thought of in the meeting is CAG has like over six locations. So, uh, depending on where somebody might be working and filling out that paperwork, it may even have to be transferred to a different facility. Uh, just, uh, increasing risk of delays or even, uh, bre, breaches. Personal Request Changes, this, this was very enlightening. So in code, uh, they're looking at reintroducing the Commercial Plans Examiner. This will help support the growing demand, uh, we're seeing from high-rise projects, uh, the hospital tower, uh, even the expansion in Innovation Park. And then next, as early as next year, they want to bring in a, uh, sec, it would be a second permanent technician for the year 2026, uh, just to ensure a smooth transition when the current technician requ, retires in 2027 after 18 years with the CAG. Uh, I, my understanding, there's a lot of things that go on in that office throughout the year. So having somebody there to learn aside, the person that's been there for 18 years will immensely help, uh, with that transition. will immensely help with that transition. And then admin staffing adjustments. So they're looking to promote the current facilities admin to a facilities manager. This was originally intended, now that they recognize the individual's capabilities. During recruitment, you may recall, the position was downgraded due to challenges of finding a qualified candidate. So now that we have seen what the new per, the person that was filling that job is doing, the executive director thinks it's appropriate to upgrade him to a facilities manager. We're gonna eliminate the proposal for the Grants Writer Administrator, Deputy Executive Director, IT Administrator and Communications Administrator. And one thing that floored me when the Executive Director shared this, he's like, I don't have an office space for any of these people. But somebody thought it was a great idea to put in the cards, bring five new people into the office at one point. The, the Executive Director also cited that they'd like some more time in their current role before determining additional staff additions, so. I think that was all I had for HR. Any questions or comments on that?
Were you looking for feedback today, sir?
Actually, yes, on the metrics. That way I can report, I, I can share those tomorrow.
Well, interestingly enough, I mean, that, that, I don't know anyone's process well enough to kind of, I guess, give metrics that would help them identify their process. With that said, I do know that there have been lots of folks that have wanted to, you know, know and understand more about CRPR, number of people served at all the, and I know that there's a document that came out last month that, that's starting to get there. But certainly refining that and understanding kind of how better those models, I think, is one thing that, that's, that's come up regularly over the past couple of years, from my perspective.
Yeah, recall, I don't know if it necessarily ties into like, sorry, I'm, I'm thinking too, too far into HR, but their, their direct desk data is important. And I think the Parks Director's been working, trying to address that because I guess some information is not available unless you pay for an add-on service to the current subscription. But yeah. It's okay if you don't, don't have anything like, like again, I want to be cognizant, you know, I don't want to be like, well, well, how, how many emails does somebody, of course, it, it's a number that can, I think they can easily, you know, get. But, you know, is it something we really need, really need to know, you know? So.
Jeremy, I mean, I, I would just say it comes down to people served. I mean, that's, that's what Bob does, this Ms. Allen does, it's people served. And yeah, I think it's, I think it's the people that know their processes and their, their job jars best. They should come up with the metrics that, that they should produce for you. And then we can kind of tailor over time and, and, and improve over time.
Yeah, I kind of like that concept of people served. And I think, I think that was something that the Parks Director was trying to bring up when they were trying to advocate for that. I think it was the Parks Specialist, just how vital that role was to like a lot of the summer programming. And even in the, even in the winter as they're trying to prepare for those warmer months. And still need people in there again, serving people, answering phones, taking reservations, answering questions and so. Anything else? If not, I'll hand it to Public Safety.
Very light meeting, and it was essentially the same as what you just described there, with the COG describing the change to their, their structure for that next year. They kind of have a six-month buffer, or a little longer than six-month buffer. They're buffered with two people, one of them retiring, the other coming on and allowing a transition within the team. Little concern there with if the person that comes in doesn't stay long enough to fully transition. You know, they decide to go get another job, like what's that gonna happen? And well, just as sure as he's, he's not transitioning everything to one person. He's, he's, he's giving a nice kind of, giving everybody, everybody enough information to be dangerous and to at least understand, know the process versus right now, it's solely within one person's purview and just getting across the board. And then also there's a proclamation that will become a little too late in general form for people. But that is the extent of Public Safety. Over.
Mr. Heller.
This is not a public safety comment, but I will just say in general, I find it interesting tonight how many of the different committees are addressing different aspects of the same thing in their own unique way, which makes me question, how much time are we spending hearing the same things in meetings or one portion of something in a meeting and taking staff time at COG to fill in that one portion? But oh my gosh, I'm sorry, this is just hearing it all tonight and how many pieces are overlapping? There's an efficiency question I have. I just, I don't, I don't, I feel like Tom Hanks is big. I don't get it. Why are we like?
Let me, let me ask, well, Matt, Matt, let me get Lisa's perspective here. At least I heard you say valid, but at the same time, you know, there have been some issues with certain things not getting communicated well enough. And so is this over-communication good or is it a complete waste of time? But you know, from a, you know, you've been here a long time. What's your, your thoughts there?
No, I appreciate it because that's exactly what I'm, it's a balancing act. Yes, and I know, I am certain, right, there's the one end of the spectrum where there hasn't been enough communication. If people want to drive to that, I get it. But then when you put a dollar sign, you want a metric? I'd like to know how much folks are spending and having to do these meetings and talk about the same topic multiple times. That's a respect, that's a metric I'd really be interested in. Maybe that's a tangible one. I don't know, sorry, I get animated about this, but I'm also like, I know even tonight, we have folks in the audience that are waiting to have their, their items addressed and we're spending time addressing similar topics.
And I'll just add, I think this is something we should communicate back to our executive committee liaison, who's also Chair of COG this year, to really communicate this. Because, you know, as you're all pointing out, this is a lot of redundancy that we're seeing here. And we even already pointed out how we both have overlap between Lucy and Climate Action. You know, one, one danger of that too, is that you have different committees evaluating the same topic and potentially coming out with a different idea. And so I think, you know, Lucy will look at those positions differently than the Climate Committee would look at those, you know? And so I think it's, it's difficult, you know, we, we get so deep into the detail on many things. I'll just take HR for example, that we don't even as elected officials in our own municipality necessarily delve into because we leave that to the administration, the operations. And, and so I think it's, you know, just that particular piece of it really needs to be addressed. Why are, you know, why are we, you know, asking so much of staff to educate the elected officials who are there to inform on policy broadly, you know, in many cases? And it's, when we break it down so far, I think, you know, the Lucy Committee was a combination of a couple of different committees. So I think, you know, there, there has been some effort in the very recent past to try to make these things more efficient. But clearly I can, we can see from this that, you know, trying to communicate and be transparent can result in a lot of redundancy. And so I think we do have to be careful with that. Even with our, you know, with our meeting schedule, it takes a lot of time to arrange those meetings to, you know, make sure there's gonna be a forum, to get the agenda set, to get, you know, either CNET or the Zoom video loaded up onto the COG website. You know, all of these things take so much time. And one of the parts of COG that is very important is to not be redundant of municipal efforts. And so, you know, I think, I think we lose focus of that a little bit. So I, I would like to see us, you know, bring this back to discuss and, and to give some, some direction to our exec committee liaison. So I'd, I'd suggest that to the Chair to bring back to a future board discussion, I think.
I think I'm all ready to go into the, the metrics as well. I, I think some of us may, you know, spill, spill over on the metrics discussion, but it does bring up a good point. And even something that I think Ben might want to, you know, take a look at. Because I know at least between HR and Executive Committee, some of the staff people that are in those meetings are the same staff people that you're seeing in your meetings. So within a month's time, how many hours are they just spending within their 40 hours? Or I think what it's like a hundred, maybe 180 hours in a month, or 160 hours in a month that they're spending just in a meeting going over the same, same information? And I try to be mindful of that going into general form because a lot of times it's like, look, at least two or three board members of each municipality have seen the same item that's gone through general form. So let's not go into the 30-minute discussion on it or whatnot, just for either no action or, you know, just try to streamline the process. So kind of ironic, I, I at least am aware of two people that took exception that I canceled general forum last month.
No, I mean, it is entirely a curve, but when there's no action to be done that can't, you know, we all, for, for instance, proclamations. We all do proclamations here. And so if there is something to be done, there, you know, we don't want to be duplicating the efforts that our, you know, valued staff at the municipal level in our own, you know, residents are, you know, having us do. And so I think, you know, you just think about all the time that that saves, you know. Our Senator, Region COG is a council of governments, yes, but one of their primary functions is as a service provider. And when, you know, we need to look at what we're paying for the services we get, we're paying for a lot of all of this.
We're, we're paying for somebody to be in four or five hours of meetings with elected officials when they may only need to be in there for two in a given month.
Love that metric.
I, I was, I was gonna say, I remember during COVID, even in my job, that, that was something. And it was kind of enlightening. And then over time, as we kind of got into the groove of that, we were kind of like, yeah, we don't need to have all these meetings. Kind of even want to give a shout out to our manager because even, even her and her predecessor started realizing that with our own township staff, like, well, if I'm gonna have them in a board supervisors meeting for four hours twice a month and they may only present something for 15 minutes, like, that, that's taking time away from the day-to-day.
I think Rob Snyder's about to get up and run out.
I, I just remembered that, that that's kind of been something that, yeah, both township managers have been cognizant of.
Yeah, absolutely. So thanks, Matt, for bringing that up. It's an important thing to talk about.
Any, anything further, O'Malley? I apologize, that, that turned back into HR instead of Public Safety.
That been for me. Thank you.
All right. Parks Capital Committee, Ms. Stevens had no new updates, but I will definitely take any feedback or questions. They'll probably not get answered till July, but we can take those if anyone had anything. If not, for the Parks and Recreation Governance Committee, Patty had reported that he continued refining the wording of the updated draft agreement between the authority and the municipalities. The draft will return to the committee once more before going to the municipalities. And then they reviewed the existing criteria for accepting Parks as regional parks and found the document severely outdated. The Parks Director will draft a new document in form which will be presented at the next Governance Committee meeting. And ironically, Patty had nothing overlapping to report, did she? Any questions?
Parks Capital, Parks and Recreation, what's the other Parks Committee?
The Parks and Recreation Authority. I've even brought up that Township has their own Parks Committee.
So see item prior to this. Okay, thank you.
Making a note here. All right, Department Reports, I will recognize the Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is the May Department Report. And happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If there are no questions, I was gonna say, I think, thanks staff for compiling that. Tonight under New Business, we have the Consent Agenda items of the Street Tree Planning Pay App, the Carbon Ramp Upgrade Pay App, the Science Park Sandy Pay App, an MOU update for the MS4 Permit, the Blaze Alexander HOP Application, and an authorization for an increase of funds to replace a water softener. If there are no board members that want to pull any of those items, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Matt. This is Matt, so move.
And do we have a second?
This is Lisa, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Heller, second by Ms. Strickland. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, next, a public hearing on a resolution to rescind Resolution 201817 and authorize the Township Manager to execute a service agreement for flubotamist services for blood alcohol collection from arrestees. And I will recognize the Township Manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative summarizing that the execution of the service agreement between Ferguson Township and the selected medical provider for the purpose of providing flubotamist services to collect blood, blood alcohol samples from arrestees as needed by the Ferguson Township Police Department is provided. Said resolution is provided. Also provided with the agenda pocket is a copy of the soon-to-expire Resolution 2008-17. Essentially, this is just to continue a, the, the resolution has been drafted slightly different in that rather than the medical provider be identified in the resolution, it's to identify that the Township Board of Supervisors would authorize the Manager to execute said agreement as long as it was reviewed and approved by both the Manager as well as the Solicitor, recognizing that there may be some legal matters. There is a fee. It has been in the previous resolution identified, I believe, as $35 per hour. And so we've increased that up to $55 per hour. I will share with you that it is very likely that we will continue our selected flubotamist services with Mountain and Knee Medical Service as the provider. And so the board is asked this evening to consider adopting the resolution that would allow for us to enter into an updated agreement with selected medical provider to allow our police department to carry out their official duties.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so anyone in the room or online that want to address the board on this. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and just mention that a resident did ask us prior to this meeting how this service is currently handled and do tax dollars pay the fee or is the person that is taken into custody pays this fee? It's my understanding there's, we, the Township pays the fee, but there is sometimes grant opportunities that reimburse and offset those costs.
That is correct. We currently have a grant program where we have those costs offset 100% by the grant.
If there's no questions for the Manager, I'll take a motion to execute the.
Just a question, so there's a grant that comes from the state or Fed?
Highway Safety, Highway Safety Program.
So somebody, let's say, let's go through this scenario. Somebody is blind drunk, they require this service. They test well above the, the basic, you know, the, we'll set the lower limits. They don't pay anything besides all the other legal issues, et cetera? They don't, do we have like a little rider in our, I don't know, in our citation that says flubotamy service? You know, extra $100? service, you know, extra hundred dollars and we can recoup anything?
Well, we recoup because the state provides grant funding for this program.
Which is still taxpayer dollars going to somebody who may have broken the law. Well, in that scenario.
Now that you bring that up, that's interesting because at least somebody, no, I'm gonna leave names out of this, paid, I think, at least a few thousand dollars for a DUI. So where's that few thousand dollars go other than the, the public defender or the judge?
No, clearly this is a different conversation outside of maybe the municipality and Ferguson Township, but it just doesn't seem right that taxpayers would have to float even in a grant money for somebody that was absolutely in the wrong. Okay, thank you. That was my only question or comment.
Now, it'd be interesting to follow the trail of that because with fines associated, you know, is that what goes back to fund the grant? So it's an interesting question to, to follow that back.
Kind of like speeding ticket where we get twenty-eight bucks and the other hundred sum goes elsewhere.
Okay, thank you for humor, me.
Just along those lines, how many, how many, oh, sorry, I, I'm happy to make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Uh, I move to repeal and replace.
All right. Do we have a second?
This is Matt, I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Mr. Heller. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll start it.
To adopt the resolution. I just want to be clear, I want to clarify that the motion is to adopt the resolution.
Omari, just for your record, could you clarify your motion?
Uh, my clarification is...
I believe we want to state that we want to repeal Resolution 2008 17 and replace it with the proposed resolution. Does that work?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification. I appreciate that.
Can you clarify that, Omari?
Uh, I, let's, let's vote this current motion down. If, if that's what we want to do and then we'll do a new one.
Could you just report it?
I just was seeking clarification. I'm good with the motion. I just wanted to clarify
that it was that, adopting that resolution. Okay.
You're, you're comfortable that that's not gonna create any challenge or?
Nope. I just wanted to clarify that we are adopting said resolution.
So all those in favor of, well, it is, it is gonna be a resolution. So I will have township manager call the roll on the resolution as said by Mr. Patterson. And I guess I kind of gave the clarification. Mr. Patterson consented to that.
Are we ready for roll call?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So this is, uh, uh, Resolution 2025 dash seventeen Supervisor Patterson or Chair Patterson, or excuse me.
Just make him chair.
Jeremy Thompson.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All right. Omari Patterson.
Yes.
Matt Heller.
Mr. Strickland.
He was yes.
Oh, okay.
Point of order, oh my gosh.
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
I just wondered how many, how many of these we do per month? I'm still sorry. Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. He was gonna ask the question.
But yeah.
Um, that's a great question and I don't have those numbers in front of me. Not very, we don't do very many per year, uh, but I will have to follow up into that, uh, exact number for you.
Cause I know the, the use of force, we average about five and most of them are, uh, folks that are inebriated. So I didn't know, do we do blood, do we do the blood for, is it just a few or a couple of the, the ones that, do we know?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have the statistics in front of me right now, but I will certainly be able to get that, um, exact number and be able to provide that to the board.
Sounds good. Thank you. And then the second thing I had was, um, now that there are multiple providers closer to the, to our township, right? There's the other one over by, um, is it prudent to just go to the one or can we, can we toggle between a couple? Is there opportunity to do that now?
Yeah, great question. And in fact, also what informed the, the reason to kind of rewrite the resolution, just to give the manager the option to be able to select. Um, we did get quotes from another provider and those quotes came in, I think, almost triple what we got from another, the provider we're likely to go with. Uh, so recognizing that there could always be opportunity for either cost savings or if a medical provider that we currently are contracted with closes, um, shop, uh, the way the current resolution is written is that the manager can, you know, enter into an agreement with the medical provider to provide the, um, these services. So great question. There are other options. We've got quotes from them and at this time, uh, will likely continue to execute the service agreement with, um, Mount Nittany based on the quote, uh, being far, far lower than the other, other options we received.
Happy that. Thank you.
So I'll go ahead and do the resolution again. We'll call it that. We'll start over and I won't trip over my own words and, uh, yeah. All right. So Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Supervisor Patterson.
Yes.
Supervisor Heller.
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right. Next, we have a public hearing on a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, D C E D Strategic Management Planning Program, S T M P. And I will recognize the manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is, uh, a resol, a drafted resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to D C D as part of standard procedure of Phase Two D C D Strategic Management Planning Program. Also recognizes stamp. Uh, under Phase Two of the stamp program, Ferguson Township is eligible to receive funding for the implementation of selected recommendations stated in the stamp final report. The board, we recall that in January, uh, D C E D Specialist Terry Cunkel, uh, presented in front of the board and identified a little bit more in depth what the stamp program entailed. And while the first phase was to conduct an assessment, um, of management, a management audit as well as a, uh, review of our, our financials to prepare and present a recommendation for a multi-year, uh, financial plan. Also included in this program was the, uh, opportunity for five years of funding to actually carry forth and implement recommendations in that stamp program. Um, so as recommended in the stamp report, Ferguson Township intends to undertake the development of a local comprehensive plan to, uh, to complement the Center Region Planning Agency Regional Comprehensive Plan update that is currently underway, recognizing two that they, as you've discussed, um, are currently going through leadership transition, staffing transitions. Um, and so recognizing that not only is it recommended because Ferguson's, uh, demographics and landscape are drastically different than some of our other municipalities that participate in the C R R P A program, um, we have very unique needs, recognizing Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three have different, um, different aspects that we might see in our local regional comprehensive plan update. And please know that I am not at all recommended, recommending that Ferguson continue indefinitely with our own local comprehensive plan update, but that we do it this one time, which will also serve as a template or kind of as a guiding, um, approach for future, um, participation in our regional comprehensive plan update. So we can better advocate in a more strong, with a stronger voice as to what our needs are to inform in future comprehensive planning updates at the regional level. So I didn't confuse you on that. I'm happy to answer questions, but, but in addition to having that selected recommendation as, as indicated in the stamp report, uh, to have the local comprehensive plan update, also to conduct a comprehensive review, uh, for an update to Chapter Twenty Seven Zoning, uh, recognizing that over the last couple of years, we've heard, uh, not from our, not just from our current planning director, but from our former planning director, that, uh, even with the zoning update that was done maybe five, six years ago now, we are still seeing some areas for opportunities to do a review and do an update specifically to respond to some of what we're hearing in terms of it's difficult to build, et cetera. In Ferguson Township, I think going through a rewrite with this particular board who's received a lot of feedback from the public and going through a rewrite would allow for us to revisit that with a informed expert professional partner that specializes in zoning ordinances, um, being able to provide that support. And then of course, the third item as part of this, uh, resolution would be to include for funding would be to perform an assessment of township facilities and assets for a comprehensive master plan based on future space utilization, building improvements and phased expansions over time. Um, we haven't talked a lot about, uh, comprehensive space utilization assessment study, you know, since stepping into this role, while we do see and talk a lot about Building Six, our lead facility, what we haven't really talked about is how our, um, for example, our P D station has really, our P D has already, you know, outgrown their station and they've started utilizing Building One. And, uh, Building One is the former Public Works building, uh, but there are some areas that, you know, I'm happy to talk, uh, maybe more in an exec session or a future meeting, we can talk a little bit more about some of the security and concerns about how we could properly expand our P D, um, facility to meet the needs that would align with accreditation. And that's just one example, right? We have our old salt shed after building our new salt shed. Uh, so it's really an opportunity. And another example is we've already expanded, you know, extended all of our impervious surface for parking. Parking is a big, um, big area of, of, of discussion these days is that we don't have enough spacing for parking, um, necessarily for our staff. Uh, and so when we have events or we're having certain activity happening at the township, we find that we're asking staff to relocate their parking, um, areas. And, and if you just drive around at our campus, you'll see there's so much equipment kind of spaced, um, in spaces right now. So we're, we're really bursting at the seams right now. And so having a comprehensive utilization, um, space study done for a recommendation would be really good. So we're not just kind of hodgepodgeing our, our way through issues. So that said, that the drafted resolution is provided with the agenda. Uh, we can get up to fifty percent off for these, uh, projects that the township would need to pursue either way. And this is an opportunity to receive funding, which ultimately is what benefited, um, or attracted the township to participate in the stamp program. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Heller.
Public hearing?
Oh, yeah, this is public hearing. Anyone for the public? All right, Trevor's up.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Trevor White, Ferguson Township. Uh, for anyone who knows me, uh, zoning is like my big thing. So when I saw that this was on the agenda item, I dropped everything that come here. Uh, so I wanted to take this time to express support for this resolution. Uh, I'm doing a little project on my own time. Uh, but I got this data from the Center County G I S. Uh, we have, and I'm double checking these numbers, six thousand three hundred and thirty-two parcels, uh, tax parcels from Ferguson. Twenty-seven hundred of those are R one and R one B. We have fifteen different zones. So what I'm trying to do with this project is to highlight that because minimum lot sizes are set up the way they are, it fundamentally restricts supply of housing, which you talked about. Uh, simple actions such as reducing lot size minimums, setbacks and changes to maximum height limitations will help to bring about much needed change, not just to our township, but a lot of these problems that are faced nationally for a lot of municipalities. When we have large horizontal distribution of, uh, houses, uh, it reduces the efficiencies of mass transit, which makes people rely on cars, which exacerbates the parking situations. It's not really a secret as to why Ward One doesn't really have great CADA access. They're very sparsely populated or less densely populated than downtown. So by increasing the density, uh, by reducing some of these lot size minimums, um, there's a lot of opportunity to build instead of horizontally, vertically, not necessarily high rises like downtown, but a nice balance. That way we're not expanding horizontally constantly into our agricultural sector. Um, the reason I want to stress this is that because, uh, without this, uh, the future Ferguson Township could easily start to look like the urban sprawl around, uh, the D C metropolitan area that I grew up in. Uh, when we first moved there, it was a ton of farmlands. You could actually compare it a lot to what Ferguson looks like right now. And now that is no longer the case. And so things like zoning, uh, are gonna be very important. So I, I just wanted to come and express my support for, for this as a, as a resident and say that this is, uh, the direction the township definitely needs to go in if we're going to build more multi-modal transportation, if we're gonna have sustainable development. And without it, we're just gonna eat into the farmland and that's not gonna be good for anyone. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, whether online or in the room? Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing. Um, I will also share, I did receive again, uh, some resident comments before the meeting. Um, this particular resident didn't believe now is the right time for the township to take on this grant. Uh, the board supervisor should review the full grant proposal rather than just the synopsis. Uh, they went on to emphasize the need, uh, for the board to prioritize public safety, infrastructure, land use regulations and the quality of life. A second resident had questioned if the grant would enable staff to act independently of the board supervisors once the grant is awarded and also shared concerns over taxpayer expense and fiscal responsibilities. Um, if, is there any questions for the, the manager? If not, I would entertain a motion for this before we go into deliberation.
Omari, I move to adopt the resolution.
Do we have a second? Um, I was second, that's just to move this forward. Um, discussion?
I'll, I'll go. I'll, I'll give a few comments and then maybe I'll come back. Is that okay?
Yeah, I understand. Sorry. We can do that.
So we can all kind of take turns? Cause there's a number of different things to address here. Cause they're, they're really, um, uh, highly individualized segments of this. And so, you know, is it a little bit difficult to lump them all together in one thing, understanding that it is a, you know, I, I am supposing it's a singular grant proposable. We don't see the grant here anyways.
That's right. And I forgot the most important piece as part of your discussion you may be interested to hear. Um, this quickly elevated to my radar when I was at a conference last week. I ran into the D C E D director and she shared with me centuries, the last bit of funding in this fiscal year, cause they operate on a just, a different fiscal year than we do. I think they end June thirtieth. The guaranteed funds for the stamp program that remain, um, they are considering at the end of this month. And only municipalities that are, that have been eligible and participated in Phase One of stamp program, um, with a resolution indicating like, yes, there is going to be support to advance forward allocations for the, the projects that have been selected in this Phase One stamp program will even be considered because there's only so much money. So only municipalities that are like ready to go would be considered. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Just for this fiscal year?
Just for this fiscal year. Because as we know, funding right now is on the chopping block for all levels of government. And so not sure what funding may be provided in the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. She was just saying, you know, we were, well, as you recall, they were here, Lisa and Terry. And so they, you know, they're, they're advocate of, they're advocates of the work that we're doing. And she wanted to give me that, that update. Um, so with that said, that informs your discussion and to answer your question very directly. Yeah, the application, I mean, as you know, you're, this resolution is brought to the board because there is a funding piece here, right? Um, and so for that, for D C D to allocate funds, um, they would want to make sure that the municipality is going to support the other fifty percent of the funds. They don't want to give funding to a municipality that isn't going to be able to pick up the project and , and carry it forward. So yes, as part of all things, this goes in front of the board for that. And, uh, and then we would carry forward or rewrite the assessment, um, and tried to get as many items in here as possible. So, yes.
Okay. And then, so the total is two hundred thousand. So our portion would be up to a hundred or our portion would be up to two hundred thousand dollars?
So right now it's written to maximize the funds. Um, we have not gotten cost estimates to confirm exactly what a zoning rewrite would be, for example, or what a comprehensive utilization study would be, for example. Um, you would know that because it would not, it would either, it would either have to be something that gets brought to the board in this fiscal year because it's not currently budgeted. So you would know what the exact cost would be in a scenario where you approve the resolution tonight. And then in a scenario where we are approved for all of the funding. And then in a scenario where we are approved for all of the funding, which would be a $200,000 match.
The match is 200.
The match is 200. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be able to, that we're going to be awarded 200,000 or we're going to be able to do all three of those projects.
Because the last rewrite was more than 200,000 itself.
Our planning and zoning director had said, you know, we're looking at somewhere between 125 to over 250,000, right?
And that was six years ago.
And so I'm recognizing that in this resolution, we've put three projects on here. Now we go to get quotes, right? If the lowest quote is 200,000, the conversation from a staff level is going to be, what do we want to prioritize to bring in front of the board? Do we want to prioritize the zoning rewrite only? Do we want to prioritize the comprehensive space utilization or building assets study only in a scenario where that's 200,000? I mean, I, I will be honest with you, this got elevated, right? Because I learned about the remaining funds that are available. So I have to have this resolution to even be considered. But the reality of it is, I don't have real cost estimates. So this is just to get us in the eligible zone to be part of, you know, to be, to be eligible to be a recipient of these funds. The next step would be real cost estimates and then bringing it back to the board. And while I say a budget amendment for this fiscal year, the reality of it is, I don't think we're going to actually be able, we're going to end up having to budget it in the 2026. By the time D C D gets back to us, by the time we do an R F P for requests for proposals, the actual start of any one of those three projects is not happening until 2026. But all of the preparation and discussions would happen in 2025. Does that all make sense?
It does.
I'm just trying to line us up for the best opportunity of success to leverage all funding outside of taxpayer dollars.
But that would only be if we wanted to apply this year.
Right, we would, okay. And we would know by about August, right? And then we could do an R F P. And by the time we get everything aligned for ready, set, go, probably looking at December, January, which means it will go into that fiscal year. But I have to write the resolution to say that the board is going to support the match dollars.
And I'll just, you know, again, I'll just start with a couple of my items. You know, it's just, because that's not exactly how I would read the resolution. I think it's fair, it's just, you know, putting a lot in front of the board without a financial parameter around it is a lot to take in, you know? So I think the zoning rewrite in itself is just such a large project. I'm, we haven't deliberated yet on if that's entirely what's needed, you know? Was a great point made about protecting our farmlands? And that's what we do with the regional growth boundary and our protected preserve farm. So we've got things in place doing just that to prevent sprawl. And then, so I would say, you know, I'm just, we haven't had the time to kind of consider the steps there if that's.
I would agree.
If that's what's needed. So I, I will appreciate additional time in considering what steps and also what, you know, before applying, I think, you know, maybe use this time to consider the prioritization and then look at next year to apply for the funding.
It may not be there.
Exactly. But it may, I mean.
Which means you would just pay the full price for these projects and the board.
But there's not, there's not been a discussion on the timing prioritization or, you know, or allocation of existing resources. This is my concern, but I want to let others talk. So I'll just say, you know, I think, I think a facilities plan would be beneficial. You know, I don't think that's beneficial. But and then just to touch on the comp plan, I do think the township would benefit from an independent comprehensive plan. Because the R P A is currently updating the regional comprehensive plan, I think it would be good to be able to see that completed plan before we endeavor to take on, you know, some considering doing our own or an addendum. So I think the, kind of like the thrust of, you know, doing all of these things so quickly and saying, you know, these, because once you do something like this, that makes these three things a top priority for the board for the next couple of years. I don't want to understate the time and resources that were expended on a zoning rewrite. Not that it doesn't need updated. I'm not saying that because, you know, clearly it could, you know, be reviewed and updated. And maybe, you know, in a, say that was completed five years ago, maybe in another five years, it does need a complete rewrite because then it'll be 10 years old, but.
And we do have orders that we have to update. I mean, we have some legal, like we've had already items that have been recommended by our solicitor. We do need to update because it puts us in a situation. And I know we've had talks about A D Us, so I.
Yeah, and those are, you know, and again, that's what, I'm not saying that different things don't need to be addressed within it. I'm just saying that this would be your focus. It's just, it's a lot to consider in one, in one lawsuit. But again, I want to come back to some different points, but I don't want to, I don't want to monopolize all the time because I know we've used up a lot of time.
Mr. Haller?
I think it is also, to at least every, your comments, a lot to consider when we really, I think, need to be focusing on rezoning, et cetera, decisions that could be made more locally without this, this additional funding or at least putting us on the hook for up to $200,000 on of this. I, I'd like to see us manage this again to the points of waiting for other reports to come out, et cetera, understand where our overlap is and not put taxpayers on the hook for $200,000 that could go any which way. And admittedly, I'm less concerned about the facility side of the house because that's not public service, it's not public facing. That's, that I'm, I would rather see the investment in rezoning conversations, et cetera. So because this is so broad and because it's essentially setting aside $200,000, those two things just are concerning to me, especially with this time when monies are drying up, et cetera. What happens if all of a sudden we start down the process and that the grant is gone or dried up from whatever federal component might, it might be associated with? I don't know. As we learned from our last discussion, there was a program, right, that's funded by the state, but it's actually tied to federal money behind the scenes. Ah, is this one of those cases too? I just don't think this is the right time for this, but we could start the conversation as the ones, residents, just, we heard from them, we can learn a lot from G I S and other things. We can start these conversations here.
And I'll just point out too, with the regional comprehensive plan that's occurring now, we'll be able to see once that's concluded where there is a desire for different housing types. Obviously, with, within our township, we, you know, have the regional growth boundary and a lot of preserved farmland. So we're, we're constricted in a different way than some of the other townships are. We'll be able to see from their G I S and public input activities, you know, where there are other areas. That would inform some, you know, some decisions we could make or even township comprehensive plan. But that, none of that precludes a developer from coming in and asking for something, you know? So there, there's nothing stopping that. And that, that continuously happens all the time.
And if I could just expand on that, because we talked about home, you know, what, let's bring back some other conversations that we've had about fair housing and, you know, the cost of housing nowadays. And as we heard from one of the presentations earlier, no, it was last year. And we see that the government numbers that are being used say that the average family of four making $80,000 should be considering a house that's worth 356,000. I don't, those numbers don't jive for this area. So I'm concerned too, if we do invest in this, that we're going to sit there looking at a report and go, that doesn't even feel right. Because we've had conversations like that where we say, what family making $80,000 is looking for a $356,000 house? They're not. They're looking at 150, 200,000. It just, I'm concerned that what we get may not actually be actionable. So those are my concerns at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, did you have anything?
Oh, I have a lot. Okay. So, ma'am manager, I have a couple of questions for you, if you would. Can you remind me what it means, you know, in the language it says commitment, is it a 50% matching funds or in-kind services? What does that mean, ma'am?
Right, so 50% match would be fiscal dollars, right? So if we, say for example, we do a rewrite and it's 200,000, we would match 200,000 of fiscal funds. Alternatively, where it says the other item, I don't have it in front of me, but it's essentially identified. If we track staff time, that time would get deducted as part of our match. So we do raise a good point, as stated in the resolution, it doesn't necessarily have to be dollars that are coming. It can be a report of staff time that would be the equivalent of dollars.
Okay. So what, just an example there is that if our planning director, making up numbers, was making $50 an hour and worked full time with a consultant for a year, 2,000 hours, that'll be $100,000 of in-kind dollars that would match $100,000 of some consultant dollars that we're, that we'd be receiving from a grant. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And so the more staff members that work on a given FERC, then the more, the less new money that has to come out of the coffers. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Do you have any idea how much time was spent on that fire drill we had with the West College neighborhood where the, there was a sentence missing and then we had to get it back in there, had to go through planning commission and through us? Do you know, do you recall what that amount of time staff spent fixing that?
A lot. I'm looking at the director. I mean, a lot. I don't know if you want to try to put hours to that. I'm looking to the director. I know we had our assistant township manager, our director, we had two or three other staffing members that were all hands on deck. My time, not as much as theirs, but certainly a lot.
I'd add that discovering and finding deficiencies in the ordinance take a lot more time than vetting a new ordinance where you have a direction that you're going towards.
And we engage legal because at that point, we're not just trying to be responsive to do like damage control, we're doing it in a way where we're mitigating and we're lowering the risk of any legal by gauging legal to navigate that carefully and clearly, so.
You, you folks are preempting my question. So thanks, thanks for that. I, I just, I am, I am trying to get clarity around how much time is being wasted with what we have today. Because I think that's what I'm hearing is, well, what we have, let's just go ahead and we fix it, but we can't fix it if, is, because it takes time to make these fixes. And so bringing in this additional help to kind of take on that, that writing and we can keep feeding them with the list of things that were, that are missed, the interpretations are vague or the, the writing is not quite syncing with other chapters and sections. I'll look, another one more question is, is that, ma'am manager or ma'am director, how, what's, do you have any idea of how many of these things that you found that we still need to fix? We fixed one thing three months ago. How many more do we have?
It's an extensive list that has exponentially grown over the last seven to 10 days. It, it's concerning at a manager level how much we need to go in and do immediate review and potentially revision, which will include legal. If we don't engage a professional expert to assist staff, it will require our township solicitor and potential, and her staff as well to mitigate and respond with, you know, we can certainly step into doing one or two at a time as we're being responsive, especially to the list of items that we've been tracking in the last seven to 10 days. And while I certainly understand the board has a role, the board is the final governing body would be the one to adopt or, you know, not to adopt recommended changes to the zoning ordinances. So your role in the day-to-day discussions to update where those township solicitors engage, staffs engage, indoor professional, you know, expert who does this for a living, they're involved in bringing the recommendation to the board for amendments or additions or removals even at this point of some of our zoning ordinances.
Thank you. And I forgot to ask the question I was asking about staff time counting toward the in-kind. Would, are there any community, like if community owner were to come and give feedback and input, would that count toward in-kind?
I don't know. That's an interesting question and I have to look further into it and certainly rely on the expertise. I'm meeting with Terry Kunkel. So, so please know, I didn't just randomly do this. The board, you may recall, did adopt a resolution in January that accepted the stamp program and all of their recommendations as presented. And so that essentially, that policy document informed our effort to continue to move this forward. So I have a meeting scheduled with Terry Kunkel next week, I believe, next week or in two weeks to further continue the implementation of the recommendations for the stamp program that were adopted in the policy document by the board in January.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Thank you. So I would just urge my colleagues here, this is bigger, this is huge. The number of errors from the last rewrite revision, the number of misinterpretations that I have personally seen and gotten calls from friends and associates on, hey, what do you think this means? Just kind of like, you know, shooting the breeze here. And, and I'm now hearing this today that our planning director and, and ma'am manager said, we've, in the last two weeks, and I don't know where that's coming from, but there's, there's a greater list of things that need to be fixed. And if we could fix them, we would have done more than just that one thing three months ago, team. We need the help. There are dollars to apply for to get the help. Let's go ahead and use them or it will be all on our taxpayers. And we're going to get one or two things in the future because it takes a while to get this stuff done. Zoning is quality of life. All of this is taxpayer dollars, so let's use it. And knowing that there's an in-kind component of this, it's not all net new money. And, and we, and obviously, let's trust our manager to do the right thing to make sure that's being tracked well and that we're, you know, it may not be a ton of net new money. So I urge my colleagues to support this. Over.
We want to go back to Ms. Strickland?
We can. Nobody else had anything?
I, I usually reserve to the end, but you know, up to you.
You can go ahead.
So, so far this discussion has kind of changed up my remarks. If, if anything, I want to prioritize the zoning rewrite as a member of, you're former chair of the planning commission, well, former, former. Like, I was there when we were going through that last one. And to be honest, I wasn't really satisfied with the process, you know, nothing against, you know, the staff or the planning commission. I think everyone did a good job at the time, but, you know, now actually getting to see the reality of this, like, I, I think this should be a priority. And if it is a priority, that, you know, this grant will align with our long-term of planning and fiscal priorities as outlined in the stamp report and even based on public feedback that we have gotten for quite some time, to be honest. The other thing, I will address a public comment that we had received. While staff has specific directives under the Home Rule Charter, the, the board does retain oversight over expenditures and even further implementation, you know, should, should this plan warrant. And I think Sintrees had hinted on that, you're going to know the cost when, you know, quotes would come back to the board. And, you know, I don't think any, any item, you know, why, why do prioritize the zoning? I think the other two, you know, our night, would, would be nice to have a local comprehensive plan, the facilities assessment, I do see a lot of value in that. All of which continuing to, contributing to the strategic development, long-term sustainability of the township, so. That's all I had.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll concur as a former chair of the planning commission who was on it. who was on it during the time of the rewrite and then was on the board when it was adopted. I mean, all of my comments are on the record. I was not pleased with the process or the ending result. And so it's not a lack of acknowledgement of the shortcomings of the ordinance. So that's not where it's at. But I just want to understand that there's an appreciation of the actual financial cost of this and the time commitment. Like this will, when that was going on, that was the job of the Planning Commission. That was what was happening, was the rewrite for at least two years. So very little, you know, that was the focus. And, you know, I'm sure on the board's side of it, it was also a large number of presentations and discussion on every different element. So I would just strongly urge that it be considered, you know, what exactly you're undertaking in that. And so I think there was a lot of, you know, just take the public outreach for, you know, like every element of that is very, very exhaustive. And so I think, you know, I just, I'm not certain that there is, you know, not that there isn't a full appreciation of that, but you know, that that is what it is. It is that large to undertake this. You know, you look at the borough has been doing theirs for several years. And also it is, you know, when we say rewrite, that means a rewrite. And so I think, again, I have acknowledged in the past and I'm not saying that there, you know, that the current ordinance is, you know, where I would like it to be. In fact, even the layout is not where, you know, I didn't support that, the quick views and so forth. And so to have that gone would be great. I would be very, very pleased personally to see this in a different format. So, yeah, so just to kind of, you know, to frame that in that way. And so I think it's just difficult to be, you know, have this put in front of the board, you know, with this kind of large-scale time and financial dedication in this instance, you know. Okay, now you're deciding that this is your focus for the next two years. This is where, you know, potentially additional $200,000 is going. It's a lot to consider in that short of a time. And so I think, you know, I understand that there was, you know, not, it wasn't known that, you know, the deadline was this soon or what have you. So I think, you know, I get, I get that, I get that. But, you know, I would just encourage the board to, to consider that. If we move forward with this, I'm not, again, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of moving forward this, but, you know, to really consider, when you consider rewrite, what are you saying? You know, you're working with the, you know, the consultants that we engage. You know, I mean, they were, it was just a lot, it was a lot. And so, you know, and the regional plan, the regional comp plan update will be completed at the end of the year. And so, you know, from what you were saying, my understanding was this is a five-year allocation of funds. Did you say something about five years?
As long as the funding continues from the federal level to the state level or there's not a reallocation of funds, yes. What we know is this allocation of funding that remains is from the 2024 to 2025. This funding is guaranteed should we be awarded because it's from the pot of funds that were, that was already given to DCED. Future funding in their new fiscal year, July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026 is what is yet to be revealed.
Yeah, I mean, the way that the resolution reads is to develop the comprehensive plan and a zoning rewrite and the facilities plan. So it's, you know, that's what the resolution states. And so I think that's, I think that's complicating this as well.
I can appreciate that comment and I'm happy that to omit the comprehensive plan. I think that if I were to make a recommendation as to what to prioritize, if the board wanted to see a prioritization of those three, I would say the zoning rewrite because I know that we already have items right now that we will invest dollars and staff resource time to have to do amendments to certain zoning ordinances. And it could actually, full disclosure, exceed what our match is.
It will.
It will because we're going to piece me out. We have how many ordinances in chapter 27? A lot.
That was five or six years ago.
Exactly.
And so no way it's going to be significantly higher.
I would agree that CRPA, Regional Comprehensive Plan Update, there's merit in letting them go through that process and we can come back and reevaluate this project, whether it be DCD funded or not, at the future time. But I would say that zoning review and rewrite and the space utilization, only because, and I'm happy to share when we're in, at a different time, like, we have to utilize Building 1 to meet some of our, for example, accreditation requirements. And so we're utilizing Building 1, but perhaps Walt might want to weigh in, our co-executive director, on how we could be, should be using Building 1 based on what that building's permitted for. And so there's a lot of small renovations that we can invest in. And but while I say small renovations for a mediocre, not even mediocre, like to barely meet code, still doesn't necessarily meet our needs of space utilization. So having that study done allows for that increased efficiency that we've been discussing. And so I would recommend those two items if we needed to prioritize. And I'm happy to acknowledge that we could vote on a resolution with the removal of the comp plan.
Well, I'm actually in favor of including that comp plan in there. I think it's the terminology of the zoning rewrite that has me really, really concerned, the way that that's phrased.
The rewrite.
If I may.
Go ahead. Yeah.
If I may, the motion on the table is to amend to, to adopt the resolution as written. And so I would just, from this point, I would encourage, maybe present some amendments to the motion or maybe some amendments to the resolution and, you know, to move this along. If you've got some wording that you'd like, then just make a motion. Over.
Thank you. In the narrative, it had stated that midway through the narrative, the development of a local comprehensive plan to complement the CRPA plan to conduct a comprehensive review for an update to Chapter 27 zoning, which I found to be more realistic and probably a little bit broader and not pigeonholing either staff or the board. Because this will carry into, I don't know how many iterations of the board. This will be a very lengthy process. So, you know, whatever future board members, so that it's, you know, an overview. I think that the language in the narrative reads more, and then thirdly, and to perform an assessment of the township facilities and assets for a comprehensive master plan, I think that reads much more clearly. And that would be my suggestion as an amendment to the resolution in the third whereas paragraph.
Easily done if that's what the board decides to do.
Even, even reading that personally, the difference between the resolution and the narrative.
Admittedly, I was, it was out last week, but coming in as needed. And that resolution was drafted by me, but in a very quick way. And so that narrative that you just read was updated very recently with more time and space. So you, what I'm acknowledging is that you're calling out that the narrative is written in such a way that gives a little bit more flexibility. And I would agree and I would also support that amendment. Happy to do it if that's what the board decides.
Yeah, I believe Omari had made the motion initially. And so if I'll ask our Roberts rules, parlayed in for the correct procedure, he would take a friendly amendment to include that inclusion of the narrative language as, to replace the complimentary language in the third whereas paragraph. To replace that complimentary language in the third paragraph, the third whereas paragraph of the resolution, if that makes sense.
It does to me.
So I'd ask Omari if that makes sense to you.
Okay. So the third whereas would reflect the narrative?
The third whereas paragraph would reflect the narrative language in terms of the three, the three portions of the.
Yeah, it makes sense to me. My experience with Roberts rules is that you would make a motion. You would move to amend, just as you described. And you'd get a second. We would vote on that motion to amend and that amendment would be added to my original motion. And then we vote on the full motion, which is the, you know, approve the resolution with the amendment.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll make a motion then to replace in the resolution the third whereas paragraph that begins, whereas Ferguson Township intends, and to replace that language with what appears in the narrative with the beginning of sentence three, as recommended in the STMP report, Ferguson Township intends to undertake.
This is Omari, a second.
This is a roll call vote for this resolution.
This is just for the.
Sorry, this is, yeah, not yet.
This would be for the amendment, so could that be a voice vote?
Right, thank you.
It's got to be, yeah, voice vote for the amendment to the original motion.
All of us in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. The township manager will call the roll for domain motion.
Thank you.
Just point of order, the amendment is debatable, but does anyone have anything to debate?
No.
I think you're a good manager.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. All right, this is a roll call vote. Supervisor Patterson.
Yes.
Supervisor Heller.
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland.
Yes.
Chair Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you, resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Yes, Mr. Heller.
Point of order, I'd like to poll the folks joining us here in person. Gentlemen, are you here for items six and seven related to the land development? I would like to make a motion that we move item six and seven up to the next items on the agenda.
Do I have a second? I will second that.
I'm sorry.
It's for the minor land development plan for Nixon Road as well as the public hearing for the ASA related to the same property.
I was going to say, all those in favor of modifying the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? Pretty sure it needs two-thirds and we have two-thirds, so that is passed. So let me just mark, so don't forget.
And Mr. Chair, while you're marking that, I just, because we didn't do any discussion, which we probably should have, I just, you know, I think I've made this point before. We need to adjust, you know, at the appropriate time, which is in the beginning of the meeting or in January when we kind of make a new kind of order of operations. I agree with Matt 100%. You know, folks are in the audience to get them in and out. Let's do it. But I think we seem to be, this is, yeah, we seem to have more and more individuals coming, which is great, but it's reactive versus proactive over this.
Agreed.
Thank you, I'll take note of that. Any board member is always welcome to adjust the agenda to beginning of the meeting or even propose different limits to the debate, which I should have been a little bit more mindful of our time limits of debate when we get these heavier agendas. So next up, we will go to a minor land development plan for Daniel and Kelly Wright at 1,000 North Nixon Road and we will recognize the planning and zoning director.
Thank you. The next two cases, as stated, do go together. It's provided in the agenda as an application for the minor land development plan submitted by LITD Engineering on behalf of Daniel and Kelly Wright for the plan titled Minor Land Development Plan for Daniel and Kelly Wright, dated October 1st, 2024, revised March 28th, 2025. The plan proposes the retention of a second single-family home on the lot and again, at the same location, zoned RR Rural Residential. April 5th, 2021, Board of Supervisors granted a waiver from, from the code to allow two dwelling units. There was an existing dwelling in it. The family was building a home with the intention of then having a place to stay and then demolishing the second home. They have since decided to keep both. So now the waiver doesn't apply. They instead need the land development plan that qualifies as a minor. On May 27th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the land development plan to the Board of Supervisors. Therefore, the recommendation is for approval.
All right, any questions for the planning and zoning director? Do we have a motion for item number six?
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors move to adopt the proposed minor LDP for Daniel and Kelly Wright, 1,000 North Nixon Road.
And do we have a second?
This is Lisa, a second.
All right, any discussion?
I did have a question when you asked for questions. I, perhaps I read it wrong and maybe it was stated correctly. But help me out here, there was a waiver and a condition that the dwelling would be demolished within six months of a CO when the new building was built. Is that accurate?
Yes, and that would no longer apply because they now are coming back for a minor land development plan. Previously, the waiver was to not do this process because essentially they would have ended up with one home, but four during the construction. But now that they'd like to keep both, they need a land development plan, therefore this process.
Okay, and so I did read that right. So 2021, there was one house. There was a, okay, go ahead and build the second one. And then six months after your CO, you got to tear down the first one. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so the second one gets built. Is that accurate?
I don't believe it's completed. I'm looking at all of the permits right now. The last one that's entered is the end of 2024, so the CFO has not been issued yet.
What's the status of that building then?
The CFO has not been issued, so it's still technically under construction. There's, they have a number of permits that have gone underway and all the way up to electrical service.
Okay, so we're four years down the road, building's not ready, and then the owners have said, hey, we'd like to just go ahead and keep both properties. Is that, is that normal? Is that, is that a?
Excuse me, until they're ready for public comment. Thank you. Until you.
I thought you said applicant.
Yes.
See, what they were questioning, Mr. Wright, have answered.
Yeah, if somebody wants to definitively, that'd be great.
I would invite the applicants to the podium.
Hello, I'm Dan Wright, 1,000 North Nixon. It did seem like maybe I could answer some questions on timing and that kind of thing. So yes, the House were anticipating. So yes, the House were anticipating moving it in September, so it was about a two-year build. We're the general contractors on it. And it's taking some time. It's a timber frame. It's a unique home. So it's situated in the center of 44 acres. We're the existing dwelling, which we initially got the waiver that we would tear that down six months after COO for this, this new construction. Since that time, we've invested money into the, the place and would like to keep it, so we would have two dwellings on the 44 acres. It just seems, it's expensive to tear it down, and it's also, you know, the sustainability of tearing down a, a building like this that's now fixed up, a house, and it going into a landfill and that kind of thing just doesn't make sense. So it just, you know, we, we, we went through the land development plan with Joe here and completed all that so that we could have the two dwellings and maintain that.
Okay, and, and it wasn't, I guess you're saying that the general contractor, it's been just more of a timing thing, it's just taking a little longer because it's so unique, because it's gonna be this beautiful thing that's everything you've wanted it to be. It's just taking a little bit more time. And, and in parallel, you spent more, some more money on the existing structure to keep it going because the other one took a little bit more time. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's very accurate. Yeah, it's a dream home, and yeah, it's, it's taken time to, to do what we're doing here. Yeah.
Okay, awesome. And I, I, as I was reading it, it, it gave me almost a, you know, I'll just say it, it was almost, it gave a bait and switch type of a vibe to feel to it. And I'm not getting that with the words, with the words coming, coming through the microphone, so I really appreciate that clarity.
Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, I can tell you, my, my wife, when we first saw it, we were all about the land. She goes, I'll never live in that place. So it, and then, you know, I'm like, well, it makes sense to live in this place while we're building, look at what, what the rent costs, you know, in state college are. So then we ended up putting some money into it, and then, then you start looking at everything, and then you look at the cost of taking it down, and it's a pretty nice place now. It can be a guest house, and, and then tear it down and put it in the landfill somewhere just doesn't make sense. So. And we're talking two dwellings on 44 acres.
Right. Yeah, no, that's awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate the clarity there, Steve.
Thank you. Any other board discussion?
I just want to say husband of the year award for recognizing that his wife is right, and you know, you're making concessions, so that's on the public record now. Well done. Only comments. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Since we do have a motion on the table, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Say no? All right, motion passes. Just a point of clarification on parliamentary procedure. Robert's rules of order does allow the agenda to be modified at different points during a meeting. Just the changes do require two verdirg's vote unless the rules of the organization specify otherwise, so we are good with that. And that will then lead us to item seven, eight.
Hey, Jeremy, sorry, I, since you brought it up, I was not debating when one can change when the, as we just did it, right? I was debating the consistency factor, right? I, I try to operate on consistency. And we've done it in the beginning of the meeting, or in January, which I've been told by several chairs, right? Hey, this is the way we set up the meeting, is our cadence, so let's stick to the cadence. That's, that's why, that's why, that was, those were my remarks, not necessarily when Robert's rules allows it.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I, I understand the arguments of the consistency. I just wanted to make sure that we are not only consistent, but we're also in compliance. So I wanted to make sure of that and follow up on that, so I appreciate your feedback. Item six, seven, a public hearing on a resolution on an application for a modification of agricultural security area at 1,000 North Nixon Road. And I will recognize planning and zoning director.
Thank you, Chair. This is a public hearing on the resolution for the application, and this is to be incorporated into the agricultural security area that was recently updated. So the same property, 1,000 North Nixon, provided in the agenda is the application for the agricultural security area. This is per PA Act 43 of 1981, again zoned RR, rural residential. The Ad hoc Agricultural Security Area Advisory Committee convened on May 14th, 2025 to consider the application for the property accepted into the ASA. They voted unanimously for approval. Also, May 12th, just prior to that, the Planning Commission reviewed the same application, and both, yeah, sorry, they also voted unanimously to recommend approval, and both resulted in a report. The report follows the criteria recommended by the act. They're included, again, with the agenda. Also included is the resolution that you would be voting on, and again, this, this is, this is the public hearing.
All right. You get a public hearing. Any members of the public want to address the board? Anyone online or in the room? Not seeing any. I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to adopt the, approve the application.
This is Matt. I move that the Board of Supervisors moves to adopt the application for a modification of agricultural security area.
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa's second.
Got a motion by, Mr. Heller's second by. Ms. Strickland, any discussion? Or questions for, yes?
I just want to thank the members of the Planning Commission and the members of the Ad hoc Agricultural Security Area Advisory Committee and staff who come in together. Of course, you know, it went through Planning Commission and ASA, so doing that, I also want to say how much I appreciate Mr. Wright coming out and having a conversation with the committee during the night of, of that discussion, so thank you for making yourself available for that. So, no, looking forward to this. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will recognize the township manager to call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. This is a resolution and a roll call vote. Supervisor Heller?
Yes.
Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I.
Thank you, and, and as a local engineer, I would greatly appreciate having those land development plans and things like that moved to the front of the agenda.
Understandable.
Put our sense in there.
Understandable. Anyone need a break? There's like 15 minutes of the meeting, well, approximately 15 minutes of the meeting left.
I'm good to push.
Okay, we're gonna push.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just talking for me.
I, I, I'm gonna give it a try. Next up will be a public hearing on a resolution that authorizes the filing of a grant application with the internal, I mean, the International City Council Managers Association, ICMA, for the Economic Mobility Opportunity Special Assistant, EMO SAS Program. This is item six, four of the agenda packet, and we will recognize the township manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative, which includes that the ICMA Economic Mobility Special Assistance Program selects 15 local governments nationally to serve as host communities for the Economic Mobility Special Assistance Program, and through the grant program, supports salary for a two-year tenure position designed to bolster economic development. Provided with the agenda is a drafted resolution that we would need to submit as part of the grant application. Again, it's 100% of the funding for the salary of the, of full-time position that focuses on advancing the township, Township Economic Development, Growth and Innovation Strategic Plans for up to two years, which dovetails nicely as we advance forward with our commitment to fostering sustainable growth while enhancing economic opportunity through our local economic development, growth and innovation strategic master plan, which is currently underway. We already have the economic development coordinator position that is currently being 50% subsidized through the Appalachia Regional Commission grant that we submitted and received funding for. And so this would be a continuation of funding, but through a different program, and would be 100% funding of the salary only for up to two years, which would then allow for that, that position to, you know, not just have supported the economic development plan, but then carry out the implementation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, this is a public hearing. So anyone online or in the room want to address the board? Not seeing any, the public hearing is closed. And prior to this meeting, I did receive the following public comments, similar to the last one. This first resident just doesn't believe this is the right time for the township to take the grant. Board should see the full proposal and focus on other priorities. The other public comment was just a resident looking for some clarity on the purpose of the grant, sharing some concerns that the position was only temporary, as well as concerns of staff authority and oversight. With that said, if there is, I guess, any questions for the manager, take those. If not, we'll take a motion to kick off deliberation.
I'm happy to make that motion, so Mari, I move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, do we have a second? I will second the motion, and we will start discussion.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Heller.
So I guess my concern is, I don't know how this position fits into our strategic vision for economic development in Ferguson Township.
Well, first and foremost, this position exists currently. I, this is just an effort to fund, offset funding for, you may have recall, the economic development coordinator position. So if we were to pull up the budget right now, you would see economic development, but you would only see the 50% funds allocated, which I want to say is somewhere between 20,000 or 25,000, to offset the 50% match that we have through Appalachia Regional Commission. So this position was maybe several years ago initiated from my predecessor as a full-time position, but we dialed that position back, took it out of the budget, and wanted to do this, this economic development, growth and innovation plan, and then we were able to get funding as part of the plan through ARC, and so that position is currently temporarily funded. And so this would be allowing this position to continue for another up to two years to carry out the plan. Hopefully that answers your question.
So just to, because my understanding, yes, there, there is an economic development position that's been unfunded in the CIP, and we might have removed it from last year's, but then we got the, the ARC grant to do the economic development study and strategic plan.
And as part of that, we were able to get funding to bring in specifically a part-time temporary position?
Yes, for the, to do the study and the plan.
Right.
So in my mind, I'm not, like, those are separate, so I just, just for, you know, my fellow board members, I was really looking at the person doing the study, and the person doing the study is part of that grant. And that was that program that we were doing.
Right, and so as we have, once we have that plan, we don't want the plan to sit on the shelf, right? We want to be able to carry forward, and this would be a position that would offset costs, like.
But we may want it to sit on the shelf. We haven't seen it yet, which is the other part of that, that comment. But anyway, but just to, just to clarify, the ARC study, or the, the ARC grant was for this, the study, and to create the plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ARC study was to create the plan, and then we were able to get funding for the, for someone to take the lead, recognizing that our current staffing.
To do the study.
Yeah, our current staffing was that we didn't have any capacity to help lead that plan, so we were able to get that part-time study.
Yes, that's what, so the grant funded the study.
And this, right, and this individual helps provide support with connecting with our businesses, understanding the needs of our businesses, you know, furthering the economic development opportunities. You know, I know right now we have her working and expanding in conversations with, like, Pine Grove Mills. We have those streetlight poles, flat, the, the signs. So it's like, as we are looking and hearing from the board and the, and your constituents, that you want to see more economic development activity, it's happening in a very interesting way right now, right? Like, everything from doing Pine Grove Mills study to having ADA accessory, like, leading pedestrian, right? Like, economic development is really currently, because we don't have a plan that defines what that looks like for Ferguson Township. We kind of see that at a staffing level. It's happening in various different ways, expansion of our infrastructure, expansion of, of various activities, businesses. And so having this position where we have somebody dedicated that's got a pulse on that and carrying out and managing what that looks like in a strategic way is helpful. And this is, this is 100% funding, so I, even if the board decides not to pass it, I would be very interested in understanding, like, why we wouldn't accept funding for a position, that we would only have a position as long as we would have the funding for.
I just wanted to ask that one clarifying question.
Yeah, no, and this, that helps me understand this, but I, I guess I was, what I read in the narrative doesn't seem to to mirror kind of what we're, I'm hearing right now. And I think that's why I was getting concerned with this, was because it doesn't, it didn't seem to have that. But when I hear, oh, this is to fund the person that's doing a job right now, to kind of refocus them into the future, past, you know, the work that's been done in developing the things that they had previously, then I say, okay, that, that's a different conversation. Then it sounded like something new coming across the table that was, but this is a new funding source for that person, is what I'm hearing right now.
It was the person in that position that identified this as a, as a program, because it somehow didn't get on my radar. So this person said, hey, there are these opportunities, and if the township's interested, I will further pass it along. So I read through the program, and whether it's this individual that continues in this capacity, or someone else, being able to have someone that's focusing on whether, you know, of course, my initial thought is that, sure, once we have our economic development plan, growth and innovation, there will be components of that, I imagine. We would want to see some of that as we get that put forth and presented to the board, carried out, right? And so having somebody carry that work forward, a dedicated person, even if just for a year or two years, to expand on our economic mobility is just a benefit. And then, even in her current role, focusing on the development of the plan has been extending and participating in various different roles that only support our current businesses right now. She's out meeting with, I think she said next week is 814 Sidery. She's been, all the players she's been connecting with. So she's been an asset, is where I'm going with it, even in addition to what she's currently doing with Appalachia Regional Commission for the plan, the development of the plan. And so having a continued role through this EMO Special Assistance Program just seems like a natural extension. So, I don't know, I'm not as concise here with my comments. Did I answer your question?
I just want to clarify, like, in the budget, so the community and economic development planner.
Is it called a planner?
The, the economic development.
Coordinator is what it's called, right?
Coordinator.
Yes.
You're saying that the ARC funding in the budget is not just for the study, but is under that particular position?
It's paying for that position, 50% of it.
Okay.
To act, to facilitate and lead the plan. But when the funding's over, when the plan then, it, it, you know, when the plan is anticipated to be completed at the end of this year, funding for that position goes away, and that position is no longer. position is no longer.
Right. Because what the board had agreed to was to create the plan and then to review the plan.
The funding allocation, it was broken down. So the resolution had a breakdown of all of those allocation of funds. So the board authorized a 50% match for $150,000. So we had $150,000 to match the Appalachia Regional Commission. We have a position that supports the development of that plan, and it's all within $150,000, less than.
And that, but wasn't, was that position termed as a consultant or a contracted position to?
I have to pull up the resolution. I'm looking to, so, I don't know. I can try to pull up the resolution and I can answer those questions.
We had a question for Mari. Give you a chance to pull up.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize I'm not in the room there. Just, just getting back into the country. But I was trying to, I'm a bit lost. Yeah, it's Kendi, but Ms. Alvarez. But where, where, I'm having a hard time understanding where this is going. There's a motion on the floor for a resolution for some dollars that we may or may not get. It's to go after this money for fully funded position. And the plan for the position is to work on a plan that has yet to be finished. So it, is that the concern, that last bit, that there's going after funding for a plan that isn't finished?
Me?
Whoever's the concern.
Right. So my understanding of the ARC grant had been to undertake the job of, you know, to get a consultant in to do an economic development study and create this strategic plan. And then the board would review the plan and determine next steps. So maybe that's partnering with somebody, you know, maybe, you know, whatever, whatever that is, you know, the, the plan was to identify the strengths and weaknesses of the township's economic development and educate the board, because we had not undertaken anything like that, and then determine next steps. So the community and economic, it is the community and economic development planner is the, is the position in there. So my, I guess my, just for that particular clarifying question, my understanding hadn't been that the, that position was filled in any way, was that the ARC grant was more for a contracted consultant to create the study, to educate the boards so the board can receive it, just like we do with the stamp program, deliberate, you know, discuss, what do we think about this? You know, not just, you know, I certainly don't want you to sit on the shelf, you know, that was, but my point was to say that we don't know, because we haven't seen the plan, but to, to use those resources from the study to get to page one, you know, to even understand.
Copy. That's helpful. So we just, my only response there is that if the plan is absolute garbage, then this position would help write a new plan. I don't think the plan's going to be garbage, so I think it's going to be much better than, it's going to be okay, and even better than okay, it's going to be great. And in between better than garbage and great, there's actions that we would likely say, okay, now we need somebody to go do them. And that, in this position that is, would be fully funded, would be go do it. So I think it is the best use of tax dollars to go after this grant, to have a chance to be one of 15 in the nation to get it, to then go do what's written on the page by the end of this year. Over.
Good, good, good points there. Even if, even if it's just a low, low hanging fruit, and I, you know, I'm kind of also looking at this as an opportunity to not overload existing staffing time, because, like, let's face it, since Teresa's got enough on her plate, so having this extra person to continue to fulfill that economic development plan would be helpful. Mr. Heller.
So if I may, just a couple of different things. This person, the economic development coordinator, does not turn into a pumpkin in a couple months, where they will be funded through the township anyway. This is just trying to offset this or just retain him?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't have plans, given our current condition, if that makes sense, or circumstances, to, to bring this position into focus as of yet. I mean, that doesn't mean that, you know, let's say we get the plan done and we review it, we realize, oh, there's, you know, less infrastructure and more activities that could be, like, there's currently a passport activity through Happy Valley Adventure Program, right? Like, it's low hanging fruit. In fact, Ms. Alvarez has already said, we need to do this, right? So she's already been pulling from the local community resources, saying, this would drastically help Ferguson Township businesses, and with your approval, I would like to go and be able to engage them and promote this service. It's a great program. And I said, yeah, that makes sense, you know? That's that. And, you know, in addition to, like, she's integrating it into what the consultants are doing. So as we're doing our public engagement, like, so she's being very efficient, it's not something extra, something that consultants, as we're doing our published input meetings, in Word 1, Word 2, Word 3, she's leveraging events that we've already asked to be done as part of our public input and trying to help promote this program. So without getting into the weeds, right? Because ultimately, we're here to discuss the, the funding allocations. But to answer your question, supervisor Keller, I do not, at this point in time, have any reason to suggest to the board that I intend on continuing that position. It would be a pumpkin situation. But when I see programs like this, I, I have a really hard time not submitting, and if we're eligible, sure, like, whether it's execution of the plan, whether it's continuing to leverage existing resources, but because our current staff is at max capacity doing the work that they're currently doing, there's, there's few, if any, current job descriptions that have economic development or economic mobility written into their job description. And so having a dedicated position would be helpful to the township.
Okay. I might offer, do we even have a motion on the table? Where were we with this?
Yes, we have a motion.
That's right, you and Mari. So I might offer an amendment that includes some language that says, you know, essentially seeking the grant and that the position is terminated upon essentially lack of funding or those funds being rescinded, or some other language that sounds more eloquent than that.
Yeah, I appreciate that feedback, and I will share with you that I'm already currently exploring outside of this position, based on our current financial condition, which I will share with you, I don't, it's not necessarily supported by all directors or division managers, but looking to, as we present offers, you know, one-year appointments with likely possibility of funding, or two-year appointments. So that is certainly an avenue of which I'm already exploring. And have plans on my list to talk to the Township Solicitor and Labor Council to see, like, how do we integrate language that supports that type of an approach? But the balance there, I completely recognize, is, is some people may opt not to take these positions, right? Because they're like, this is only two years. So, so yes, to answer your question, or to respond to your comment, it's well received, I can appreciate that. In this particular item, what I would say is that we will not create a long-term permanent position. There's not a request here to integrate a new position into the township's funding model. And so by way of acknowledging that, there's no intention to extend beyond the two-year, ten-year appointment, that if selected, this program would supply funding for salary.
Hey, Matt, if I may, if you'd like to move to amend, I'm open to it. But, and also, the other option would be, just, let's just make sure the minutes reflect that this resolution and, and like, the output of this is a short-term position based on the funding available. So there's two options for you, in my opinion.
You're, you're in luck, Omari. We have a recording secretary in the room tonight. Thank you, Jenna, for your support. So Matt, did you put amendment on the table? Not yet. Okay, I want to get to Ms. Strickland. She's patiently been waiting.
So is this a full-time position or?
Currently, no.
But with the grant?
It would be a full-time, the program funds full-time, up to two years.
Okay. And do we need to have the dollar amount for that?
We do not.
So how would that work?
Well, part of the grant application is that we would submit to them all of those details, and they would determine what they're willing to find in the program.
So you would, just so I understand, like, practically, so you would say we have, you, you explain how that works.
Yeah, so I have not finalized the grant application until this evening's conversation, right? I know it's been, the responses have been drafted, and so there's been staff already working to identify what the grade would be. So we have to, we have to do this as if, like, the township has already gone through its process. So we will, we have a job description, the grade, the salary range, and all of that gets submitted, and then they determine what, what they're funding cap is. We're, we're kind, it's, it's for me, I haven't, this is just one of those situations where if they're going to pay 100% of the salary, I'll submit it and see what happens. I mean, there's nothing to lose here.
So and that's what I'm asking, so you would determine what the salary is and then ask them for that much?
Right. And they could come back and say, yeah, there's no way, we'll only do 50% of that. Okay.
And then, and that would include the benefits and everything?
Benefits are not included. This is salary only. So health insurance, like, those benefits would be something that the township would take on. So in a scenario, so that's a great question, in a scenario where the position is, let's say, 60,000, which is, that shot-in-the-dark number is just, it's more than what is currently funded for this position. We generally calculate about 20% to 25% of the salary for compensation benefits. And that is probably on the high end, right? Because compensation benefits also includes retirement, and given this is a short-term position, it, it would be health benefits only. So that 20% of 60,000, 18,000, 16,000, my math is a little.
So we would pay?
Right.
So we would pay about 15,000, okay.
And that's if the individual selects that.
Intentional if they take it, yeah.
Yeah, like, we have several staff members who don't utilize our benefit package.
And then it would be for the two calendar years or?
I would confirm once I get that information, but up to two years. So generally, yes, it does fall in a fiscal year, but I don't know if their fiscal calendar year is, this is a national program. I don't know if it's the same as ours, or if it's July 1 to June 30.
Yeah, okay. I'll say, I mean, given in the past couple of budget cycles and CIP cycles, I wanted to remove that personnel.
I know, we, I talked about that.
So it's not, you know, we just have not had an express need for that, where we've had so many other personnel needs. And so that has just, you know, never been the, a priority in funding, you know, from my perspective. So that's, you know, so part of that is my struggle. And so I think that's why I was able to get on board with the economic development plan, you know, to see that, to see the study, to see the plan, and then to deliberate to see how it's implemented. And so I'm a little bit nervous hearing that there is some implementation of a plan that we haven't seen going on right now. So that is probably a separate issue, that has me a little bit surprised and a little, I, I think, so that, I think we'll probably maybe need to follow up on that. So I did not expect that part of it. So, so I guess, you know, I, I hear you with the, it's funded 100%. The other part of this is I, I just don't know what is happening with this study, you know? So it's, I'm hearing that it's, it's not done, but it's also being implemented at the same time.
Not implemented? No, no. I, I apologize if I misconstrued. Are you perhaps referencing to the Happy Valley Adventure Program?
Maybe, this is just what I'm hearing.
So I would say, in the process of developing the economic development, growth and innovation plan, strategic plan, as Ms. Alvarez is connecting with businesses and CBICC and Happy Valley Adventure Bureau, she's, she's acknowledging there's already some resources available, right? Like, if we just had someone like her who's connecting our business owners to these resources to help them be more prosperous or thriving, she's just helping connect existing resources. It's not the development of a plan, but leveraging that as she's making connections to help enhance our public engagement for the Appalachian, or for the economic development plan development, she's connecting them to.
Yeah, and I just, I, all, my, yeah, my sole point will be, I think it will be good for the board to hear where everything's at, so that the board can kind of approve, you know, the communications and, you know, what, whatever policy the board is supporting in different initiatives.
Yeah. It's, right now, when I reference what she's doing, it's just operational. It's just, it being, it's, it's really good for having someone from Ferguson Township talk to a business owner and say, hey, how are you doing? I'm a representative of the township. What's going on? What are some, you know?
No, certainly, I think, I think, yeah, certainly. And I think, you know, us getting an update and hearing about, that will be the benefit.
So right now, we've already, for the last three or four months, I've looked at the department report, there's been an update on the economic development strategic plan since February, so since we've initiated and kicked off our P, the convening of an ad hoc steering committee, you know, every month, as we've made progress towards the selection of a consultant. Today, I was on WTAJ, you would read about this in the June report, because we issued a communication, I think earlier in the week or last week, that fourth economy has been selected. So you have updates in the department report, and there was a communication given either just today or yesterday that said, hey, as I provided the board with updates on this economic development plan, strategic plan in the department report, let's be sure that we're giving them steady updates on the progress of the development. So we have bi-weekly meetings, and you'll find in the June report, all of the milestones within the timeline that we just prepared. So it's there, and you're going to get an abundance of updates in the June report, because we've made it that far.
Yeah, I think that'll, I think that'll be helpful, and to hear, you know, that there's, I think it's positive, you know, the different communications out there. I think, you know, there's nothing negative about that. I think it's just, you know, getting an overall, overall of it, I think will be helpful.
You will continue, the board will continue to get updates specific to the economic development, growth and innovation strategic plan in the department report. It's usually within the first five or six bulleted points.
How do we make an amendment?
Yeah, I think that's, so you're going to make an amendment to?
Essentially, the amendment would include language that, you know, adopt the resolution while not creating a long-term role or expanding the position beyond the funds made available through the grant.
Well, the long-term role is in, is in the budget. So I think maybe just, and we're not sure of the fiscal year of this, I think was, that's what I was asking about.
The, the program won't trigger a permanent position within Ferguson Township.
Whatever motion you make, I will second it.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you just want to ensure that this, that we do not continue funding for a position beyond what is in this program, two years, whether it's a January 1 to December 31 fiscal year or a different fiscal year, you just, you're saying, okay, two years, as long as it's being funded, those salaries being funded through this program.
Yeah, so probably what we'll need to do is address it in, in the budget text. Yeah, so probably what we'll need to do is address it in, in the budget text because it is a permanent position.
Right, so see, every, every resolution that you adopt for filing of a grant because it, it's coming to you solely because of the funding expenditure, you will see it again in the budget.
Right.
So yes, to answer your question, you'll see that position again in the budget, but it'll say offset with funding. Um, and then it'll acknowledge that we'll have some dollars to decide for the option of benefits. But it will be transparent, it will be in the budget.
So is there discussion around amending my amendment before I make the amendment?
You should make the amendment and I will second it.
Yeah, just for the record.
Okay, I'll make the amendment, then the motion would read, the board supervisor moved to adopt the resolution while not creating a long-term role or expanding that, that position beyond the funds made available through the grant.
Second.
Okay, got an amended motion by Mr. Pat, Mr. Heller, seconded by Mr. Patterson. All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, I will recognize the township manager to call the roll on the main motion.
Thank you, Chair. This is a roll call vote. Uh, Supervisor Strickland?
Yes.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Patterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Heller?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Resolution, uh, passes unanimously.
All right. Uh, item 65, a discussion on donation requests from Valley Community Business Alliance for the Route 45 Getaways Event. And I will recognize the township manager.
Thank you, Chair. Provided with the agenda is a brief narrative. Uh, I believe now for this may be the third year, the township has allocated funding to support the Route 45 Getaways uh, event, also recognized as a initiative that supports economic development that was initiated here in Ferguson Township and um, passed on to Milheim Borough, who then, uh, kind of wrapped it up in this nonprofit who continues to take the lead and, and provide this wonderful, weeks-long uh, opportunity for visitors and local residents. And so provided with the agenda is a recommended motion for the board to adopt and support the contribution.
All right, any questions?
I'll, just, I'll, please.
I will recognize our friend from Milheim Borough, Mr. Ziegler.
Hey all, I'm glad that you got the request from my business alliance. Um, hey, I just wanted to, uh, say that, uh, you know, I, I appreciate the support that Ferguson Township has been giving with this. Uh, because I know we took it, uh, a little bit off of your staff's, uh, uh, plate there. And, uh, in terms of economic developments, I'm going to put on my, uh, Milheim Borough cap for a second. And, uh, in terms of local income taxes, uh, I will say these events have helped uh, generate a little bit more revenue in that regard. Uh, so I know, uh, in Pine Grove Mills, there's been a lot of participation there. And I do think it's a pretty good event. That's, it's pretty, it's pretty, uh, I think, I, it's like an elevated, uh, chill event, uh, to make it, so, there's something for everybody. And you do get a lot of people from outside of the communities to come in and check out the businesses and help provide long-term growth. Uh, and also a, a shout out to, uh, Liz Grove, a resident of yours, that, uh, kind of helped foster that. So, uh, I just, you know, I appreciate the support that your, uh, township has given us for that. And I look forward to continued support from it. Thank you.
Any board questions? Ms. Strickland?
Yeah, I've been involved with this group before, but as Robert will tell you, I've been no help whatsoever the past couple of years and I'm not on their committee, so I don't feel the need to abstain, but I'll, I leave that to the chair's discretion.
Okay. Um, if there are no objections, I, I was going to say, I don't have any objections of what Ms. Strickland had said, like, you know, I understand in the past you've recruited yourself because you were, like, directly involved in the committee, like, on a regular basis. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll just, at this time, take a motion to approve the donation request.
This is Matt Salud.
Do we have a second?
Omari, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Heller, seconded by Mr. Patterson. Any discussion?
Yeah, one, one minor thing for me, um, just, uh, how are we looking in the pot that we had overall for the year?
It's a great question. I did ask that question and I know of those numbers in front of me. Um, we do have a dedicated, uh, account for community contributions and I will have to, uh, follow up with the board and, and let you know. Great question. But I can assure you, let me also say that when I did inquire with staff, we had enough funds to support this because, um, the contribution, thank you. Uh, so, yes, there is a community contribution account, thank you. Dennis provided me with the email, uh, with my inquiry and response that I received. So, so yes, and this actually, kind of, the Route 45, because it falls under economic development, the board may recall that we actually carved out a dedicated account for economic development. So this is actually, this contribution does not come from the community contribution like, uh, the other, uh, the other community contributions that I can't come to mind, that aren't coming to mind for examples right now that we do annually. This is coming from the economic development. And so we are, um, we, we are fine. We have, uh, available funds to support this contribution as requested in the donation request. Thank you, Jenna. My apologies.
Happy life, thank you.
At a time of night where, well, my watch battery is slowly dying and I think my brain energy is also, um, not dying, just moving in that direction.
I think that next, if the meeting's, next meeting's just as packed, I'm going to have firm stop times unless we get comments from the board to move forward.
I'm terrible at jokes, though.
But yeah, no, no worries. Um, if there are no further discussions, all the, um, how are we, are we going with voice vote for this? Just to, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, say no? All right, that'll bring us up to item seven, unfinished business. Is that right?
No, I think there's.
Yep.
Start with unfinished business and then go to new business. How, okay. No unfinished business tonight. Um, communications to the board. Yes, Mr. Heller?
I had communications related to the town's agenda as well as other topics, uh, general topics in the town.
Just on tonight's agenda?
Same, same with Lisa. Uh, Mr. Patterson?
Nobody wants to talk to me.
Oh, well, that's not true. Um, I had two communications regarding the Peace Center and Cemetery Land Development Plan. Uh, did meet with a resident discussing various township matters. Uh, did receive a communication regarding public notices in the newspaper and also received the thank you for our APA proclamation. And last but not least, somebody complained to me about raising their taxes, so. Um, I guess I'm still alive. Uh, any other communications to the board? Uh, if not numbered, item nine, calendar items. The only item of note, Juneteenth to 19th, 2025, the offices here will be closed. And then we will be starting on June 25th and 26th, our 2026, 2020, 2030 capital improvement plans. Those will be, uh, special meetings, uh, that will be, uh, held here on those two evenings. So um, with that, um, we don't have Ms. Stevens here tonight, so any member of the board, uh, could you please present item number 10 to us? Otherwise, it's going to be a long time before Patty gets back.
Move it, Jaren.
Okay, we, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, folks.